Hi Greg, how are you doing?
I am good, yourself?
Good, thank you.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yes, happy St. Patrick's Day to you. Have you gone out reveling or are you otherwise occupied?
I am in the garage, this is where my meetings happen. But uh, it is the likely place there is yes, I've got the wife inside still at work and another one doing, the younger boy doing homework, so.
Well, the garage.
I put on some coats and I come sit in the garage.
Nice. I heard a story about somebody who got audited and the auditor demanded to be onsite and they said, great, here's my garage and by the way, it's not heated.
I like that one.
So I've started the live stream.
Thank you.
So we have one more minute, I guess we got more people to wait for too.
Yes.
I believe Director Donner was not going to make it, is that correct?
That's what I heard anyway, I haven't heard anything since then, but I think that was what I heard.
That is correct.
Close this, it doesn't keep beating at me, here we go. Good afternoon Chief.
Good afternoon sir, how are you?
Excellent. You always look so formal at these things.
Well, it is, it is in our uniform regulations, so I have nothing else if not a rule follower.
Really? You're supposed to be in uniform?
Any member appearing before the Board of Directors should be in Class A uniform.
Wow, well you're not actually in front of us.
What he's not telling you is he's wearing shorts and flip flops.
Oh, there you go, okay.
They're very comfortable.
That makes me feel better. So it's five o'clock, do we know?
We're waiting for Director Jex and Director Danziger.
Hello John.
Hello, good morning.
How are you? It's been a long day already, I guess huh?
Yeah, exactly, it has been a long day. Where, where are you zooming in from Greg?
Oh beautiful arena.
Ah.
My office. Which is a fake background as you can tell.
Yes, I understand.
Is that the corporate ladder you're going behind you?
Yeah, I was just thinking as I'm looking at it, maybe I should have moved the ladder. Yeah, no, it's a, you know, I'm a inveterate handyman at heart, so I'm always fixing on something. But I will move it.
Oh I was, believe me, I don't care.
Hello.
Hey.
Oh Director Danziger, how are you?
Okay.
So now we're just missing.
Director Jex.
Okay.
Do we know if he's been in touch with anybody to make sure everything's working okay with his computer and things?
Not here.
I will go ahead and mute myself and check in with him.
Okay. Uh huh, there he is.
Hello.
Hey John.
Yes.
Okay, the gang's all here. So, welcome everyone to the Maragorinda Fire District Regular Board Meeting, March 17th, 2021. We'll have a five o'clock closed session and then 7:00 PM open session, actually I think we're starting at 6:45. Now this is slightly old for a special meeting that's actually also going to be an open session. And Marsha, can you take a local please?
Director Bates?
Here.
Director Danziger? Director Danziger?
You're on mute.
Here.
There you go.
Director Donner is absent, Director Jex?
John, you're on mute. There you go.
Here, here.
President Jorgens.
Here. Okay, thank you. So we have a quorum, we'll start the meeting. First item is item 2.0, open public comment on items in the closed session 3.1 through 3.3, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any attendees, we have not received any written public comment.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment then and we'll move on to the closed agenda. We will adjourn this session to the closed session and the special meeting will again begin at 6:45. Which is for the public workshops and the open session will begin, the full open session will begin at seven. So I guess we'll all sign off now and go to the other link that we have, which is for the closed meeting.
Okay.
Hey Marcia.
Hi there.
Here we go. You're not make them here we go. You exit full screen. Okay. Exit that. There. Okay. Are the slides that you're showing different than the slides you gave me?
They are, they're not. They should be the same slides that I gave you.
Okay, great.
Yes. A little bit later in our open session, I integrated some of the presentations just to make it smoother.
Okay.
In the transition, but the information's the same pretty much.
And do we have all the same requirements for the, you know, the, this, we're having another session? We have to read because last time I had to read all kinds of things about this, the guy that we're gonna make a decision on whether to put a lean in this place again or not.
So that will.
Same, same stuff again?
That will be for the open session, correct? Yes.
Right. But is that one of these slides you gave me?
And that is a part of the slides for this evening.
Okay. I'm just seeing all that text.
It will come up.
Looking.
Seven point one.
Yeah. But where's the? I see all the, oh, yeah. Oh, so it's just the adopt resolution, that thing?
Correct. We don't have to do them individually because we have just one.
Okay. But, okay, so all I have to read is the, I have to read the whole thing about the opportunity for public comment, all that stuff?
Yeah, you.
Or do I, I agree the whole thing?
The, yes, the staff recommendation and then we'll open up the staff report and then we'll open up the public hearing after.
Great. And where we are here. Okay, and it is now six forty five. We have, we have Dirk Bates, Linder, Dan Ziger, Jex Mees, we're all here. All right. So we have adjourned the closed session and we are now back for the welcome to the special board meeting of the Maraga and the Fire District, March seventeenth, twenty twenty one, the six forty five open session. And there is no closed session for this. So we will call the special meeting to order. Marcia, could you go a walk, please?
Director Bate.
Here.
Director Dan Ziger.
Present.
Donner is absent. Director Jex.
Here.
President Jorgens.
Here. Okay, thank you. The chief, I guess the topic is a grant we received.
And so before we go to that, we just need to open public comments.
I'm sorry. Do we have any, well, openly, publicly comment for items that are not on the special meeting agenda?
We currently do not have any hands raised and I've not received any written public comment.
Okay, thank you. I will then close the public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Now we'll go on to item three point one. The authorization of, or authorize the acceptance of the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services Community Power Resilience Resiliency Grant for portable kit and battery storage and authorized capital projects, fund revenue and expenditure budget adjustment increases in the matter of three hundred thousand dollars. Chief.
Good evening, directors. In October twenty twenty, Cal OES released the Community Power Resiliency Allocation to Special District Program to fund power resiliency projects of up to three hundred thousand.
Exit that. There. Okay. Are the slides that you're showing different than the slides you gave me?
Uh, they are, they're not. They should be the same slides that I gave you.
Okay, great.
Yes. A little bit later in our open session, I integrated some of the presentations just to make it smoother. In the transition, but the information's the same, pretty much.
And do we have all the same requirements for the, you know, the, this, we're having another session, we have to read, because last time I had to read all kinds of things about this, the guy that we're gonna make a decision on whether to put a lien in his place again or not. Do we have to read all the same, same stuff again?
That will be for the open session, correct? Yes.
Right, but is that one of these slides you gave me?
Um, that is a part of the slides for this evening.
Okay, I'm just seeing all that text.
It will come up.
Looking.
Seven point one.
Yeah, but where's the? I see all the, oh, yeah, oh, so it's just the adopt resolution, that thing?
Correct. We don't have to do them individually because we have just one.
Okay, but, okay, so all I have to read is the, I have to read the whole thing about the opportunity for public comment, all that stuff? Or do I, I agree the whole thing?
The, yes, the staff recommendation, and then we'll open up the staff report, and then we'll open up the public hearing after.
Great. Where we are here. Okay, and it is now six forty five, we have. We have Dirk Bates, Winker. Dan Ziger, Jack Smee, we're all here.
Alright.
Okay. So we have adjourned the closed session, and we are now back for the welcome to the special board meeting of the Maraga Fire District, March seventeenth, twenty twenty one, the six forty five open session. And there is no closed session for this, so we will call the special meeting to order. Marcia, could you go a roll call, please?
Director Bates.
Here.
Director Dan Ziger.
Present.
Donner is absent. Director Jex.
Here.
President Jorgens.
Here. Okay, thank you. The chief, I guess the topic is a grant we received.
And so before we go to that, we just need to open public comments.
Do we have any, well, openly, publicly comment for items that are not on the special meeting agenda?
We currently do not have any hands raised, and I've not received any written public comment.
Okay, thank you. I will then close the public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Now we'll go on to item three point one. The authorization of, or authorize the acceptance of the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services Community Power Resilience Resiliency Grant for Photovoltaic and Battery Storage and Authorized Capital Projects Fund Revenue and Expenditure Budget Adjustment Increases in the Amount of Three Hundred Thousand. Chief.
Good evening, directors. In October twenty twenty, Cal OES released the Community Power Resiliency Allocation to Special District Program to fund power resiliency projects of up to three hundred thousand dollars in areas affected by public safety power shut offs. Staff determined that three MOFD stations qualified submitted an application for solar voltaic systems with associated battery storage. These systems are explicitly allowed under the grant announcement in section Gulf Two Alpha. On March twelfth, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty one, I apologize for the typo, Cal OES informed MOFD that a grant was approved in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. There was no requirement for matching funds, and a decision to accept the grant is due to Cal OES within twenty days of the notification. If accepted, a progress report is due no later than November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Accepting grant funds requires a modification to the budget. Capital projects fund budget adjustment is necessary to increase grant revenue and to increase equipment expenditures in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Staff's recommendations discuss deliberate and authorized acceptance of this. I would point out that in addition to the resiliency element of it, having to do with the battery storage and the solar voltaic systems that will augment and support our existing generators. Not only that, but the photovoltaic system will continue to run all the time and significantly reduce our electrical bill, which will free up additional resources and funds for other projects. And attached, you see the award letter and the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions directors may have.
Which three stations?
But, yes, sir, forty two, forty three, and forty four stations, forty one and forty five are outside the CPUC elevated tiers, and we're not eligible to apply.
Okay. And if to, to do the project, do we, is it a regular bid process, look for vendors?
Yes, sir, we'll post an RFP. We had, before we submitted the application, we engaged a vendor just to get an idea of pricing. We wanted to be sure that we weren't getting a grant that would buy us half of a system. And we were, we are, we were positively encouraged by their response and their pricing or informally bidding the project that at this amount will be able to install very robust systems at all three stations.
Great, great.
You're on mute, sir. Director Jorgens, you're on mute, sir.
Great, did you have comments? I, I thought I heard somebody start.
I, I just have one question. Is this, and any of the stations, is it gonna include any outlets for electric vehicles?
No, sir.
Okay.
So we're basically gonna do what a lot of people have in their homes, which is to have solar on the roof and some batteries of some kind inside, so that if it's a really cloudy day, you still have some batteries, and eventually your generator kicks in. The good news is these batteries kick in, and you don't, the lights aren't even blink.
Yes, sir, we have, we have existing power generation in the form of the generators, but generators obviously involve moving parts. And anything we can do to augment them, one of our critical vulnerabilities in the event of an earthquake, which while I know is not front of mind over the last several years, it is still very much a threat to this area. In the case of a large earthquake where we could see significant disruptions to the road system, one of our concerns is our ability to refill our, our fuel tanks over time. And without those, obviously keeping the generators running will be a challenge. This is a way that we can stretch that existing fuel longer, because the PV and the batteries will take some of that load off the generators, causing them to potentially be run less frequently, or for a shorter period of time.
So this, who's gonna make the trade off about how much solar you want versus how much battery you want?
I, I don't know, sir. Well, I think that'll be one of the things that we, we ask people to bid regarding the, the best way to size the system.
Well, but part of that's a function of how you want to use it, and whether you, you know, what, what your specification might be, but, okay.
What would the panels go as far as? This, you know, we'd go on the roof, the?
Yeah, we don't have, none of our stations have the space for ground running, so they'd be on the roof.
And so there's sufficient sun hours on all three roofs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Director Dan Ziger here. Chief, I just wanted to commend you and the staff for being proactive on these grants. You know, we were seeing more and more of these, and, you know, just being prepared and, and getting applications in and being awarded these grants is, is really a great benefit to, to the district and anyone who worked on this is to be commended.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir. Town Chief Jerry Lee is our, our stallion when it comes to grant writing. And then Glorian picks up the, the heavy lifting of the, the actual execution, and I did, I would point out that it is free money, but getting the free money takes quite a bit of work. And, and that comes on, on top of people already have a very full plate, so they're, they're doing a great job of running these down and then ensuring the execution is proper, so that they're reimbursed in a timely manner.
Right.
Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Public.
Oh, yeah, do we have any, do we have any public comment? I'm sorry, do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, we do. We have one hand raised. I am unmuting Jonathan Goodwin.
Okay.
See, okay, good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Okay, good, I'm audible. Thank you for the sound check. A couple of things. One, I, I just wanted to point out the advantage of having these things on the roof, which is that it saves your roof. You may recall at Station Forty Three, which took a long time to get replaced, had a completely rotted out shake roof for years and years and years. The firefighters had to move the buckets around, you know, to catch the drift in winter time, and well, if it takes you this long to replace the roof this time, well, you'll have those solar panels that are helping you out, so that's, that's very forward thinking on the part of the chief, I would say. I, I had some questions. Number one, you know, I mean, I assume this was just grant speak because it required something about public outreach, but I, there's something in there in the bottom about penetrating disadvantaged communities with outreach, and it just sounded weird. And I, I was just wondering what outreach has to do with this. That's number one. Number two, question is, when this stuff starts to fail, you know, the batteries or whatever it is, what, what would be the replacement cost to the district of the components that won't, that are less long lasting? And oh, and if, if there's extra money left over, I mean, they really cost a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars per station. If any of that money's left over, is it possible to spend that on anything else?
So from the top, no, it's not, or from the bottom, it's not possible to spend anything else. Any additional money is returned to the state. And, and then with regard to the sizing and so forth, we'll, we'll buy the largest system we can with the money available. And with regard to your previous question, yes, just a grant speak term of phrase that aligned with how they establish the priorities.
Well, are you planning to do some sort of outreach? I mean, what, what, what would outreach have to do with, I mean, I just?
It had to do with how the grants were being prioritized. One of the elements was creating these, these powered islands within otherwise de-powered communities.
I see, so there was supposed to be some public discussion about that, which really doesn't pertain to anything in this case?
Correction.
Yeah, all right, thank you very much. Okay, any other comments from the public?
We do not have any more hands raised.
I'm sorry, if I may, I just, there was the last question, which had to do with replacement, I apologize. And so the replacement would be a decision, the, the panels, generally speaking, have a indefinite life, however they degrade in their ability, their collection ability degrades over time, thirty to fifty years are the numbers I've seen with thirty years, really being the point at which they, they cease to have as much effect as they do from new. And then the inverters are the short pole in the tent, and they generally have a ten year warranty. I don't know about the batteries. And so to answer the question about replacement cost, that would be a decision for a future board, whether or not it would make sense to replace either those, those components which have worn or, or discard the system at that time.
You know, some of the, some of the panels come with inverters that have the same twenty five year warranty that panels do. And the batteries last, are sort of guaranteed to last ten years, and, and depends on how you use them and how often you use them and which batteries you get, you know, that's a, that could be a life, and sometimes they last longer.
And, and to address just one other thing Jonathan was asking, you know, if, if these things fail and we have to replace, so I have solar also, and so I'm still on PG&E, so if my solar fails, I just go to PG&E, and I'm, I'm still getting my, my power, and my, my house is still gonna have lights and power and everything, so I, I imagine the station would work the same way, because you're gonna, you're gonna need the gas part anyway, and, and, you know, so my PG&E supplements me if I need it anyway, so. Okay.
And hopefully that's gonna be many, many boards from now.
Yeah. I think there was a motion, I'll second the motion.
So I gotta, I gotta close the public comment period, and then does the board have any other discussion they'd like? Okay, no, now, do I hear a motion to approve this?
I thought.
So moved.
I thought, oh, Bates did, okay.
Great. Marcia.
Director Bates.
Hi.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
President Jorgens.
Hi. Okay, great, thank you, everybody. Good job, chief, and, and Jerry Lee, please do thank him for us. Real money, and a really tangible thing that, you know, sort of everybody can see and use, and, and it gets used every day, so it's pretty cool. Okay, now.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
A motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
Hey, Marcia.
Director Bates.
Hi.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
President Jorgens.
Hi. Okay, now we will reconvene the public workshop and regular meeting, which is item four on the agenda, call the meeting to order, and have a roll call, I guess, again, for this, the new meeting.
Director Bates.
Here.
Director Dan Ziger.
Here.
Director Jex.
Here.
President Jorgens.
Here. Okay, item five, report on the closed session action items three point one through three point three. There is nothing to report from the closed session. Item six, I'll open public comment for any items that are not on the agenda of tonight's meeting.
So we have received one written public comment, and I'll go ahead and read it into the record. The, this comment is from Cheryl Koo, Contra Costa County and Maraga resident. How are the measures going to be, going to ensure that cell phones will still be able to receive CWS signal alert warning to prepare to evacuate during power outages, de-energize planned outages by PG&E? Last fall, twenty twenty, this emergency communication topic was discussed on the Arinda Town Council meeting, then again in January twenty twenty one with a representative from Gov Steve Glazer's office. I was wondering what measures and moving forward into the summer months, what will the plan be for being able to receive CWS alerts on one cellphone during a planned power outage by PG&E? Have there been any advancements with cable networks, cellphone networking, cell towers for Verizon Comcast when the power outages are scheduled? Many residents had no cellphone service in Maraga, Rinda, Lafayette last October twenty twenty, when there was a planned power outage for prevention during high wind event forecasted. If there was an actual event to prepare to evacuate, many would not have been able to receive the CWS alert. Do no signal received. In the meantime, what is the estimate time we can be assured that this communication issue during a power outage, planned or real, will be worked in phases or completed? If things are still being worked on and not being able to be resolved by the high fire, red flag, high wind event months, summer, late fall, can we be assured that the high-low signal from MPD Arinda PD can be heard as warning to prepare to evacuate? Please update the situation if you are able to. If not, due to time constraints, can we please find out what is happening with the above for the next meeting in April? Please consider this email contact for public comment mentioned in case I cannot make the meeting due to our HOA general resident meeting happening at the same time. I will try to go on to the Zoom meeting at eight PM when the HOA meeting is completed. Thank you for taking the time to consider my comment for the concern of the community as well.
Okay.
That concludes written public comment, and we do not have any hands raised.
Anybody have any comments on the public comments?
I think, I think it's a, an issue that we've been talking about, as well as the Fire Prevention Subcommittee that President Jorgens and myself are on, and it's gonna be continued to, to be discussed, so you know, there's, there are still some questions. We've had it on our agenda before, and hopefully we'll get some more answers from, from either our board or through the Subcommittee before our summer season starts.
I guess my only two comments would be, any other comments?
We, we did not have any other.
Maybe from the board.
Okay.
So I'll close public comment, that's fine, but does the board have any comments on those comments? Any other comments? I guess my comment would be, you know, I think there is California legislation that is requiring the cellphone folks to have some reasonable backup, but it's gonna be implemented over a couple of years. So that's not great news, but at least it's not, you know, it's progress. And the only other thing I would do is suggest that people figure out who has the best coverage, you know, who did have coverage during those times, and if they need to switch carriers, think about that. Because there are definitely differences in which carriers already have backup systems and which ones worked during those times. Okay. Item six, we already closed the comment, so public hearing, item seven point one, opportunity for the public comments contesting we debate, but notification given by the fire district for the following properties and adopt resolution twenty one point oh five, confirming and adopting the reported costs incurred by the Maraga Fire District in abating public nuisances on certain property within the district personnel to health and safety code section fourteen nine one two. So, do we have any? I guess I'll open the public hearing on the particular. It's case number two zero dash zero five three six, successor's parcel number two seven zero four six zero 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 five. And John Dolly Nasser at forty six seater terrace for the amount of the lean proposed is fourteen thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
Are, are we gonna hear from the fire marshal first, or? I'm gonna recuse myself from this hearing.
Okay.
All right, and Marcia, could you please, I believe Mr. Nasser is, is here, could we please elevate him to panel member?
Yes. I am, I can allow him to talk, or I can move him into as a panelist.
I defer to you. I'll, I'll present first, and then we'll, we'll open the floor for him.
Okay.
Okay, chief, sounds like you're on, man.
Okay, and next slide, please, Marcia.
It is coming.
Good evening, directors. Tonight, we're going to hold the hearing for the, remember, reminding the, the board that in July of last year, work was approved to be done on this parcel. That work was carried out in October, and this is the hearing to, to determine that, that whether or not the cost should be recouped, authorized recruitment of these costs. I'll walk through the timeline, get some pictures from the site, and then obviously be happy to answer any questions and, and turn it over to Mr. Nasser for his portion of the hearing. Next slide, please. So from a timeline, originally a complaint was received in July of two thousand nineteen. A subsequent complaint was received in December of two thousand nineteen. Staff visited the site in December two thousand nineteen and noted the conditions that are shown in the picture on the right. This is all drawn from, from our, our tracking software that we use to track progress. Additional complaint was received the next day. Fuel mitigation specialists met with the property owner. In March of twenty twenty, conditions were subsequent to substantially the same as shown in the picture there, with encroaching trees with, not only with a number of violations noted specific to dead trees and the failure to complete, complete a exterior fuel break surrounding the parcel. The property was then inspected on April twenty seventh. Violations were noted still on the property. On June nineteenth, following the district's June fifteenth fuel mitigation deadline, notice to abate was sent. Next slide, please. On June nineteenth, following the district's uh, June fifteenth fuel mitigation deadline, uh, notice to abate was sent, next slide, please. And we see here is the the timeline showing uh, from the system, the the information that was summarized above with the additional pictures that are. Present in the system, so uh, if you move to the right side, about a third of the way down, the the notice to abate was sent uh, on six nineteen. Um, inspected again on July sixth, there was no apparent mitigation, no change in the conditions present. On that date, on seven nine, following that follow up visit, a lean hearing notice uh, was sent and mailed uh, via the pre-lean letter on seven thirteen. Uh, at seven fifteen, it was inspected again, there were no mitigation efforts noted. A public hearing was held on seven fifteenth uh, for on seven fifteen for the notice to abate order. And the board declared, uh, this is seasonal seasonal recurrent nuisance and approved district abatement uh, was approved by district funded abatement was approved by the MOFD board. Following that, on the twenty first, the the uh, fuels mitigation manager Gordon Graham met with Mr. Nasser today on the parcel, he advised he was in the process of hiring a contractor and will begin work within two weeks. Made a note to re-inspect on eight four, nine eight seven, uh, re-inspection noted slight mitigation done, still much work to be done. On eight twenty one, an additional inspection was conducted noting that um, some of the the trees which were previously standing and dead were now down and dead. Uh, which needed to be removed, additional abatement required. Went back out on nine two, uh, noted work was being done, uh, crews were onsite, uh, however, the the progress was relatively minor. And the crews who were onsite did not appear to have the appropriate uh, training, experience, uh, equipment or qualifications to be doing. The work that they were doing, specifically the falling of of large trees, uh, down slope, uh, not being topped, not using appropriate equipment, attempting to move. Section, large sections of approximately eighteen DBH um, tree logs back up the slope uh, with by hand with a rope, uh, and we're not being very effective. In that regard, uh, on nine three. Having noted the the time that it elapsed since the notifications had occurred, uh, district scheduled Arbor Works, a professional tree contractor to conduct the work that was scheduled for nine seventeen. And nine sixteen went back out prior to the beginning of the work, um, there were three folks onsite conducting work uh, with hand tools, uh, working on the slash and logs down the slope, however. When speaking with them, uh, there was no indication that they were um, qualified for this work, they did not have the appropriate equipment and they also indicated they'd only been hired for one day. The assessment was that day's work of work was not going to mitigate the property. And nine seventeen, Arbor Works began the work, um, the prior to the beginning of work, we'll show a picture on the next. Slide showing the conditions when we began, uh, still largely out of compliance, that work with by Arbor Works was completed in two days, uh, nine eighteen. Work was completed and then on uh, ten nine, the the mitigation invoice from Arbor Works was was sent to the owner as we always do before bringing a a bill back to the the. Um, directors for approval, next slide, please. Uh, here we see the pictures from April twenty twenty, on the left, you see the dead trees lining the road that were the the source of the complaint and the source of the discussions. Uh, with the owner in March, uh, a month prior, on the right side, see additional dead tree and and work uh, underneath the PG and E power line right away, resulting in the construction of large brush piles. Next slide, please. Here we see photos from July of twenty twenty, noting the continued presence of dead trees encroaching the roadside. Uh, and the the significant amount of vegetation, but not only along the roadside, but overhanging the roadside. Next slide, please. And here we see the photos from October, on the left was the site, uh, prior to beginning the work, you note the logs uh, dropped down the hill, um, and. And not having been abate, abated, and the significant amount of dead material still on site. And on the right, you see the parcel after, uh, the work was complete, noting that the live and green trees were left standing and that the uh, they were trimmed and limbed in accordance to the fire code, but the the live trees were not cut. Next slide, please. Uh, this is um, the work being done by MOFD contractor, you know, the uh, the large boom equipment, the the contractors working in the the dead trees there. That they're in the process of removing along the roadside. Next slide, please. Uh, here we see there was a a survey was conducted by the owner, uh, showing, I call your attention. Uh, on the middle of the the left side, the survey stump thirteen, uh, which is clearly shown on the adjacent parcel and the broken stump which is below it and to the right. Uh, if you bear with me here, because they're they're in opposite orientations, uh, the. Assessors or the surveyors drawing show is shows north as up. And there's a green or sorry, a blue arrow at the top left that shows the position from which the picture on the right was taken before we began work. In October, next slide, please. And the broken stump is visible both on the um, the surveyor's drawing as well as in the picture, just just if everyone bear with me, you're looking at opposite orientations between the two. So the thing to note is that stump thirteen, uh, that's the the stump immediately below the red arrow on the right, that was cut before our arrival. And the cutting of either that stump or one of the larger trees up along the roadside caused the the broken stump as indicated in drawing. To be dropped, that broken stump is clearly on the neighbor's parcel, there's no question about that. However, the improper cutting of the trees on the parcel in question, either stump. Seven, six, or thirteen, all of which were cut prior to our arrival and prior to the beginning of work by district funded contractors. Caused that broken stump to be broken, I would also point out for um, for those of you who have any experience. As a follower, I spoke with several professional followers to confirm this, uh, note that all the stumps onsite that are flat cut, uh, that that is not a proper arborist technique, uh, proper technique is to do a face cut. Um, to control the dropping of the log. Or, uh, in this case with the steep slope and in the urban setting and with the. Uh, encroaching property line immediately adjacent to the logs as was done with the district funded work. Using uh, the appropriate equipment, a boom truck in this case, to top the trees and to bring them down piece by piece. This is consistent with uh, with our observations onsite, that the the folks doing the work did not appear to be licensed contractors, did not appear. To have the uh, the training, the experience, the qualification or the proper equipment to be dropping trees of this size. And the fact the fact that they were flat cut uh, and not face cut i- is further evidence of that. So to to the point of of the allegation or the the concern that district cut trees that were on a different parcel, in the case of stump thirteen, that tree was cut before our arrival. In the case of the broken stump shown, that tree was broken or dropped. As a result of the improper falling of the trees that are on the parcel in question. The fire code uh, determines that creating a fire hazard on the parcel on the property of another is a misdemeanor and that as a result. That tree was mitigated while we were onsite, uh, to correct the misdemeanor that was there present. Uh, I would also point out that the work that we did uh, was strictly to abate the dead trees, both standing and the remaining ones which had been improperly fallen and were left on the ground and also in violation of fire code. But back in July, the district, the board also authorized. Um, a a second uh, violation, which was fuel break required, specifically corrections required, disc mode grade or use other means to remove all fuels. And a fuel break around the perimeter of the parcel and cross breaks is described in three two five six two three. Alternate means and measures may be considered if topography makes this impractical, alternate means and measures must be approved by the fire district. To date, that work has not been done, uh, out of abundance of caution, discretion and noting the time of year by the time we got out there to do work, uh, specifically into the fall. When there is a a fire hazard component, but we um, determined that it was not feasible to do that work with the district funded contractors in the fall, uh, however, that work was not done. And that work will need to be done between now and June first, when the the district's annual abatement uh, deadline comes up, next slide, please. And in the interest of transparency, this is the conditions onsite as of yesterday, uh, there was another dead tree, that tree was cited. Uh, as a violation of the fire code, I wanted to make sure that all parties were aware of that, so that there wasn't. A sense of that there was additional information that would be forthcoming later, I would point out that that tree is clearly dead and I will also point out that at this point in the process. I'm confident that the property owner is aware of the requirement to abate dead trees, and would point out that has not been done. That I'm happy to answer any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so uh, it would appear this would be a time to allow the property owner to. You know, ask questions, make comments, make a presentation, whatever you would like to do.
Hi, everyone, uh, I'm not the property owner, uh, but I have him with me, he's actually my dad, uh, he just, he's not as tech savvy as I am, so he wanted me to help him with, uh, we have a bit of a. Uh, a brief presentation, just some notes that we wanted to go over. Um, and uh, you know, also just, uh, as you may or may not be aware, his English is quite good, but it is not his first language. So he wanted me to help him just go over those notes, just to be concise and everything. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, well, I mean, uh, I might as well introduce myself here, my name is Yaman, uh, Yaman Chandali. Um, first and foremost, thank you so much for all the work that you guys do. Having these hearings hearings each much, e- each month. Um, and the work that the, you know, the MOFD does in general, it's it's very important to the community and we really value it. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Marcia, can you arrange for that?
I can, yes, I am will be promoting you to a panelist and um. That should allow you to. Share your screen.
Thank you.
So I'm going to pause my share. And let me know if you have the ability to share.
Okay, thank you. Um, can you still hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Let's see. Um, you cannot share a screen while other participant is sharing.
Okay, I'm going to stop share.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Um, and again, I'm just speaking on behalf of my dad who's still here with me, uh, we're in the same room and everything, so if you have any questions or comments at the end, uh, please address them towards him. But I I'm, you know, quite familiar with the, you know, with what's what's been going on, but. He's still, you know, the the property owner and everything. But anyway, uh, I'll just start. Okay, so. First, I want to start by going over what was completed, what did my dad do essentially? And it's really troubling to hear that a lot of the work was minor, uh, but it's, but I understand because a lot of the dates correspond with that. But later on, a lot of the work that was done was major. Initially. Seven trees were discussed onsite with uh, Michael and Scott, who I believe are staff members of the MOFD. And this was really just to add clarification to the abatement that needed to be done. And to further clarify, you know, exactly how to comply with the requests of the MOFD. Later on, uh, after discussing with one of the residents that was there, I believe her name is Mercy, but if you want clarification on that, you can ask my dad. There were five other trees that were later added. To totaling to twelve trees and they were marked with paint. And my dad confirmed this assessment with Gordon saying that the removal of these trees. You know, would would satisfy the requirements for the abatement. Along with the removal of a wood pile that was next to a fire hydrant as uh, as well as the trimming of some branches. So keep in mind that now we have a total of twelve trees along with some branches. Of these trees, all of them were removed. In addition to these twelve trees, two smaller trees were removed and the wood pile that was there initially was also removed. That area was then converted to a staging area to allow for, uh, you know, a more effective. Uh, method of working and you you can go over that with my dad if you need more information on it, but it was just a staging for the removal of wood later on, basically just to put the stuff there to move it later on. Uh, as it was, as it was taken from uh, from down below. And many of the trees that were, may, there were many branches that were that were also pointed out by Gordon and these were also cut by my dad. In total, this work ended up being over nineteen thousand dollars. And in addition, there's also, uh, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it was over two thousand dollars that was paid for surveying. Um, a small breakdown here, we have sixteen thousand four hundred fifty five dollars paid to contractors. And over three thousand dollars paid directly to workers. Now, I understand that a lot of these workers, such as, you know, the work that was done on September sixteenth. Were paid to do work on a day by day basis, but I I don't really see that there's anything wrong with that, there was actually, uh, there was actually more work scheduled to be done. Albeit with, you know, with different workers for the seventeenth, but it was ongoing. And it's not to say that the work done on the sixteenth was by any means, the first work that was done, nearly twenty thousand dollars had been spent on the abatement. And so so at the end, at the end of those twelve trees that were marked for removal, all of them were removed. I think it's clear that my dad was trying really hard to obey and comply and he did obey and comply with what was requested. Because in the notifications for abatement, there wasn't very much clarity, I've looked at them myself and I see that in a lot of abatement assessments or notifications. There seem to be pictures, but with these, there aren't, there's not as much clarification, which is why he had these onsite walks. With Michael and Scott as well as later on with Gordon to confirm this assessment. Now. In addition to these twelve trees, in August, Gordon pointed out three additional trees. Now, at the time we mentioned concerns, this was before the cutting of these trees, we mentioned, uh, I I believe, let me let me clarify that. Yeah, so we mentioned concerns about property lines with Gordon. And we weren't sure who these trees belong to. And, you know, you saw that we we ended up having to hi, we had to hire a surveyor, so clearly these concerns, you know, they had some substance to them. After we carefully checked our property lines, this was before we had to hire a surveyor, we decided that the smallest tree of those three trees. Was indeed on the property and its removal was planned in that same week in September. Now, let's go over the work that was done by the MOFD. Now, the MOFD contractor was hired following immediately. Uh, having workers on that land. And, you know, as you saw, the, you know, many of the staff members were aware that there were workers. Working on that land and removing some of the of the the debris, many trees had been cut, they were there on the sixteenth, it was clear twelve trees had been removed. But these three trees were removed, along with four other trees. Of those four trees, none of them had ever been mentioned in any of the assessments, in any of the walks that were done with with uh, with Gordon, with Mr. Graham. None of them were mentioned. The three trees were mentioned, you know, as I stated earlier, but there were concerns about the property line. And as and a significant portion of brush clearing and other, you know, tree tree debris removal was also removed outside of the property line. And I think it's really important to again mention that the four other trees were never discussed. And I myself had been onto the property several times. In August and September to check on my dad who had been there through these hazardous working conditions, toxic air quality, I'm sure you will remember that. And I specifically remember two of the trees looking incredibly healthy and green and full of life, and I'm really surprised that those trees were cut. And I think it's it's fair, it it shouldn't even have to be said that we expect compensation for the removal of these two trees, which really added to the property. And potentially as well the cost of the surveyor who we should have had to hire in the first place. Now, I think that ultimately, the fact that we had to hire this survey, the fact that the base, there, we did see that picture that was presented, thank you for that picture that was presented. But the base of those trees, of those two trees, were not on our property. And of those three trees that were mentioned, those two were the largest. And I think that this really shows a lack of professionalism and it doesn't, it doesn't show a proper abatement. There were workers working on that area. Through and including on September sixteen, there was work planned for that week. On the se, on the seventeenth. And further to add to this, my dad was there on the seventeenth. And he tried to bring workers, but he was barred, he was told you're not allowed to bring anybody on your property right now. To work on this area. And it makes sense that there were staff members from the MOFD on September sixteenth in that area because neighboring residents were notified the prior day. The Arbor Works would be there on the seventeenth, the following day. But my dad, who had been on that air, in that area, working in the area, was not notified. And really, that that doesn't make sense to me, from from an empathetic, from a professional standpoint, from any standpoint, really, it doesn't make sense to me that he wasn't notified. Now furthermore, we saw that the number of trees initially was seven trees. And it ended up increasing to twelve trees, thirteen trees ultimately were valid for removal, there was that one smaller tree that. We were, you know, trying to decide whether or not that was on our property line that was ultimately planned for removal. But the scope of the work kept on increasing. And I implore you to find that initial twelve tree assessment that happened at the beginning. Because I I couldn't find it, I've looked through the paperwork, I couldn't find some, I couldn't find anything like that. And there's also the matter of the healthy trees, the healthy, green, beautiful trees that I saw myself, that I saw myself. That were there, that were removed improperly. And regardless, a lot of the work that was done. The removal of brush and tree debris and the removal of those trees was done outside of the properly, the property lines. Now ultimately, ultimately, I think it's quite clear at this point. After nearly twenty thousand dollars, if you include the work from the surveyor, more than twenty thousand dollars, I think it's quite clear that my dad has put an incredible amount of effort. I think it's quite clear that my dad has put an incredible amount of effort into abating that land, and he's done everything possible to follow the instructions and do, you know, do whatever is possible to remove all of the required trees and comply. And I think it's, I think that a lot, a lot of this, it's just, it seems rather unreasonable to me. As well as the removal of the healthy trees. Now, I hate to say this, and really, I don't, my dad doesn't really want me to bring this up, but I think it's important to know just, you know, from, from a point of like, of empathy and understanding that, you know, $20,000 is not a small sum of money, and it's not like my dad just had this money laying around. If you look at the history of this parcel, my parents have actually been trying to sell it for some time, understanding that we have to maintain it. And they do understand that they have to maintain it, and they've been putting in this effort. He had to take loans to get, to get this $20,000 to do this abatement. And yesterday, yes, we received notice of the, like, of a request for the abatement of another tree. And if that takes, if that means taking out more loans, then he'll do that. But this is through a pandemic, a worldwide pandemic, through toxic hazardous air conditions. And I would expect more understanding. You know, I really, I really respect the local governments working in the La Mirinda area. And I've always loved the residents here. I grew up here. I've spent my whole life here. And I really, I expect, I expect more understanding, more empathy, more understanding, especially during this past year. And that's all I have to say. Again, if you have any comments or questions, I'm sorry if I, if I come off at all aggressive or anything. I just really care about, I just really care about my parents, and I see what's happening with my dad, and I've been seeing how much work he's been putting in. And I just, it's just sad for me. It's just sad for me to see this. But yeah, if you have any questions or comments, please address them to my dad. He's here as well. You can remove me as a panelist. I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute myself and I'll have him raise his hand.
If I may, before you drop off, the allegation that live trees were removed, we have no evidence to that. We're not aware of that. The staff who are on site witnessed dead trees being removed. Do you have anything to support that allegation?
Yes, we have pictures from the Google Street View showing that there is green foliage on those trees. And there's other documentation that I can look for, but frankly, there's a lot to go through. There's, there's a lot that I wanted to mention today, and frankly, a lot that I should be mentioning today, that I, that I just don't have. I'd rather be concise and just, in the interest of time, not mention it. But yes, there should also have been pictures in the, I believe my dad sent an email, but if you want, I can pull those up. I actually looked at those yesterday. I looked at them yesterday. Thank you for your question.
So, board members, chief, anybody have any questions, comments, rebuttal, whatever?
I would just make the observation that this property has and continues to consume a tremendous amount of limited staff time and resources, which prevents staff from doing outreach, education enforcement, and other areas. I concur that doing work in the late summer and early fall, when the not only air is poor, but the fire conditions are right, is a terrible time to be doing fuel mitigation work. And that's why the outreach began in March, well in advance of those seasonal events. I would also point out the trees that may have been green and healthy at one time, they die, as we see with the tree that is there, that is dead today, that was not dead when we were last on site in September and October. So the, and I would also note that the citation specifically states, 20.01 clearance of hazardous vegetation parcels corrections required to remove all dead or dying trees, combustible material, hazardous vegetation, and/or rubbish from the entire parcel. So that the number of trees that are dead is not a fixed number. The trees have a life cycle, and in this case, trees have did and have continued to die. Furthermore, the removal of combustible material as shown in the picture, absolutely, that combustible material in the form of the logs was not on the parcel in question, was on the neighboring parcel. That's because they were improperly cut and allowed to roll down the hill. So I disagree the dead tree, or that live trees were cut. We have no evidence of live trees being cut, and we're not aware of that occurring with the photographic evidence that I demonstrated, I shared before, as well as the observations of staff on site. We have no awareness of fuel mitigation work being done on the adjacent parcel, other than to collect the detritus and the logs and the other elements of the trees that were improperly cut and allowed to drop onto the neighboring parcel.
So we, we, we do have Nasser Jendali raising his hand to speak.
Okay.
Oh, his hand just lowered. So please, okay, I am, I'm allowing you to talk.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I would like to
If you're near your son, there's gonna be feedback. He might, he might
About the two broken. Do you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. What I was trying to say about the broken tree and the next stump, both are totally on the neighbor's property. Okay? And the broken tree was broken and fallen way, way before the stump 13 were cut or whatever. And a lot of work was followed with that, with that, with that, with that on the neighbor's property. I would like to reiterate again. The broken tree was fallen, and I would before, and it was not as because of that tree. It's totally, the story is really unfounded. However, I would like also to let you know that about the, the green trees that were cut, I was two weeks with Mr. Gordon Graham. And he never mentioned them to me. I worked with him onsite before, and it is not gonna die, these trees in a matter of weeks. I know you cut with the picture that Mr. Winnaker showed today that were taken yesterday. It is about six months later. This is six months after. So the many trees died after that time. But not in a matter of two, three weeks. These, I mean, and the other tree and the smallest tree, I know, how come I was working till the evening of the 16th of September, and the next morning, the, the the contractor of the district shows up for work? This is really terrible, I find. I mean, there should be an appreciation and more communication with the owners regarding this without any prior he did get the time to notify the neighbors or the resident at 40 Cedar Terrace that the contractor is coming next morning. I was going there to work when I went there, and I was surprised, and he didn't want to let me in, to enter my property, Mr. Gordon. Okay, but I would like to say is it is really, and I had to turn back the worker who came to work. But anyway, and it was scheduled, the whole work was scheduled, and I have witnesses from the neighbors and from the contractors that this work was due to be completed totally and per the the MOFD district. And I was, I had been positive with all my meetings, even back in March. And also, back, coming back to the notes of 2019, we never received any notices regarding this property in 2019. Never, not a single one.
No, no, I think there might have been the late one.
And, 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 and after I met, I just received the call, the call from the, from a lady, maybe Tiffany, I don't remember exactly the name, and I scheduled to meet her onsite. Then I ended up meeting because she was too busy. In March, I met with Scott and Michael of the MOFD staff, and we walked and we pointed out seven trees, and these trees were taken.
Okay, I think, I think we mentioned, it's okay, we don't have to mention it.
I believe, I believe that by, by the time I would the MOFD contractor showed up on site, most of the work that was called in, in the June 19 notice was done, but extra work as it develops, we were taking care per the instructions of the MOFD staff. I really would like to see how this gonna unfold. Thank you for listening, and I really appreciate, with all due respect, I would like to see a fair save from your parts regardless.
So I guess I have a couple of questions, chief, if nobody else has. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I do, I do. So, on, on the 17th, the owner has said that the neighbors were notified that the work was gonna be done, but that he wasn't notified that work was gonna be done on the 17th, and that he showed up and they wouldn't let him on the property. Is, is, is that a statement of fact that the note, the owner did not know that work was gonna be done on the 17th?
That's very possible, sir. When we move forward with the execution of the work, it's, we've gone, as I believe we showed in the timeline, there've been exhaustive outreaches, there've been months of waiting for the work to get done. The work had been approved, and we move forward with executing the work.
So it's not a required notice?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
So, chief, I thought I saw a picture that you showed that had, I think, maybe a yellow chipper or a yellow truck or something on the right-hand side of the picture, and that stump, I think you called it number 13.
Yes.
It looked like that was a picture prior to when our people showed up.
Yes, sir.
So somebody else, either the adjacent landowner or, you know, Mr. Nasser, cut down that stump. Who knows whether, I'm not, you know, I don't know that we're necessarily forensic experts to figure out that the other tree that was down necessarily got knocked down by that tree, but but certainly, we didn't cut down that tree improperly, because it was already cut down. We have pictures of that. You know, he certainly was trying eventually, but I guess the answer I would have is, gee, you knew about it for what, six months? It wasn't smoky the entire six months. A lot of that was before it was smoky at all. And, and there was a fair amount of, you know, there was knowledge at least of some, they might have been dying over the summer. The tree, I've seen trees die in a couple, I have seen them die in a couple of weeks. They go from looking reasonably okay to, you know, stressed, and it looked pretty sick pretty fast. So you know, it wasn't a perfect situation for anybody. We spent a lot of time looking at it and I'm it's too bad he was there doing the work as, as we showed up. That was probably not ideal, but does it have to be a 01 decision, by the way, meaning? So it is of the $14,000, the $7,000 of that, our overhead, the, whatever we call it?
50%, sir. So a little less than $5,000.
No, like $7,000.
It's 50% on top of the charge. So it's approximately $10,000 in work with a 50% administrative surcharge.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the, you know, that he's, from, from his perspective, he started to work on the 16th, came back, I'm hearing him say at least that he came back with his crew there to work on the 17th, and MOFD wouldn't let him on the property and do any more work. I understand that this had been going on for months. And that our work took two days. And so I don't know if, if, if the owner, you know, tried to do something about it, tried to, you know, say that he would do the rest of the work on the following day. I didn't hear that from the owner. I'd wondering if, if he did any follow-up on the 17th to try to reach out and, and say that he, you know, wanted to come back the next day and do the work himself. I didn't hear him say that.
This is a, I mean, there's a policy decision to be made here, that from staff's perspective, the work had been approved, and we do not believe that a resident has the ability to exercise an effective veto over our ability to move forward with creating compliance with the fire code after having been through the hearing process by doing pieces and parts of the work. If you look at the picture on the left, those were the conditions when we showed up to begin work. And that's, that's notice, I would, I would point out that that is several months after the notice to abate was issued. I would argue that those conditions made the site less safe than it was before the abatement began. It is also indicated that, speaking of to the qualifications, the equipment that the crew members had onsite, on one of the days that we visited, there were several folks that appeared to be day laborers, four of them using a rope, attempting to pull those sections of log up the hill in order to mitigate them. In the picture you saw, where there was a chipper in the foreground, that looks like approximately a six-inch chipper, it's not appropriate for this equipment. This was, this was a large job. I do not disagree with Mr. Naster's concerns about that. This was a large job, and large jobs are not inexpensive, but they also require the appropriate equipment and the appropriate people to carry them out. That had not been the case on any of our visits to the site. Many of our visits to the site suggested the folks who are doing the work were not qualified for it, did not have the appropriate equipment or training, and were doing things that were not in alignment with industry best practices for the falling of large trees, and were allowing significant amounts of material. I point out that that was logs in the foreground there, those are all on the adjacent parcel as shown in the surveyor's map. So they were doing things that was creating a hazard and moving that hazard onto the neighboring parcel, months after the board had approved moving forward with work. It certainly is within the board's purview to direct that work not go forward if the resident is doing something. But my concern becomes is, is to what end? And at what point is that something not enough? And at what point does the district move forward? I think it is noteworthy that the parcel was abated, it was two days worth of work, and while $10,000 is not inexpensive, you, you can, I think you can clearly see the difference when a professional crew with the appropriate equipment turned to on that parcel.
Do we have permission to speak at this time?
Sure.
All right, well, I would just like to reiterate that, you know, we didn't begin work on the 16th. At that point, nearly $20,000 had been spent on this work. I think that my dad would also like to go over, you know, different contractors, because there were many different workers that had worked on this land. It's like you said, it's a big job. And I would like to further reiterate that of the trees, of the four trees, you know, some, some of the largest trees that were worked on by the contractor hired by the MOFD, none of these were pointed out by Gordon, by Mr. Graham. And I think that's, I think that's a really big issue because many onsite walks were done to clarify what the abatement entailed. And the communication between my dad and Gordon was fairly strong. Gordon would come by on a very regular basis. And I think that my dad mentioned that he, he might have actually been onsite on the 16th, and that makes sense as he notified the neighbors. And he was, there's, it's for certain that he was aware that my dad was there at that time. But they were in strong contact and strong communication. And it was clear that my dad was doing the work, continuously doing the work. And yes, the toxic and hazardous air conditions, they didn't last the entire past year, but the pandemic did last for a good portion of the year. In fact, it began in 2019, but lockdown only began, I think, in March or a little bit before then. And so I think that's a very relevant issue, and my dad would also, I think that he said he wanted to mention that many of the contractors were very like
They were very professional ones. Even the workers that I hired independently, they, I did have to buy workers come for them as well as general liability. And not only that, they used to work with, and they were working full-time with other three companies, and I had to, because it was super busy timing of the year for all the three services companies. All of the companies and all the workers with the tree service were very busy, and it was very hard to get them. I know during the pandemic, and so I even hired one of the workers, one of the contractors that I have, he removed that pile that Mr. Winnaker showed was done because we, by the fire hydrant, that pile of wood was taken out by one of the MOFD guy who by, by a contractor who did, who does work for the MOFD with the East Bay Tree Service. They did that, they removed, they chipped all that pile, but we used that area as a shipping, as a staging to pile the wood there. To pile the wood there to to for to remove the ear by chipping or hauling it away. Now, the workers, even the workers I hired personally, did work on huge trees. Otherwise, these, some of these trees were much larger than. The 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 trees that were taken by the M O F D. And not only that, one of the contractors, same contractor, removed a huge giant tree for one of the neighbor by in. From the one of the neighbors' properties next door. And it was a huge and he took it. They are with, I did hire professional people. Okay, this is in other words, and also about.
And I'd also like to reiterate that two of the trees that were removed were not even on my dad's parcel. Which I think is extremely unprofessional.
Which two were those?
Uh, of the of the uh, seven main trees that were removed, two of them were uh, on the neighboring parcel.
But isn't that the one that we see a picture of there that's on the neighboring parcel, but it was cut before we got there?
My dad speak about that. What was it?
These are these are two of them, the the one with the bro- the broken tree as well as the cut stump. They were they were down the hill, diagonally down there, going there and they needed to be removed and Mr. Graham. Mentioned that they need to be removed, but they are not on my property. I notified the owner that they are not and also that it's not my property. The other thing also I would like to mention is. I always mentioned, and this is to Mr. Steve Danziger, that I I I I did. My contract with the guy, especially the one who was working on the sixteenth and did work before. To finish the work, to bring the whole lot, the whole land, the all that piece of land to complete compliance with the fire district.
Yes, there's also the issue of the removal of the healthy trees. And the two trees that uh, yeah, I misspoke, not not necessarily the cutting of the trees, but the removal of them. You you can see that they're fallen, but you know, we had to hire a surveyor to show that they were not on on forty six.
But the origin, the the origin of the tree, it was your tree. It it was just fell on the adjacent property.
No, this is not true. No, this is not right. No.
And we confirmed this with a surveyor.
Well, but so. In the picture that's up right now, as I understand it, the the stump, not the bed over tree, the stump is on the neighbor's property. But there's your chipper. So it's before we showed up and it's already cut. So we didn't cut it. Somebody else cut.
The fallen tree fell and the base of it is on the neighboring property.
But so is the stump this side of it?
No, actually, both trees, these two trees are on the neighbor's property.
Right. So who cut that tree?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Can you repeat yourself? Uh? Sorry, sir.
The the problem is if there's a tree that underneath the not not the bent one at the red arrow, the one right below that. If that's already cut and it's your chipper that's sitting there on the side. So it's before we showed up. We didn't cut the tree. Somebody on your team must have cut the tree or your neighbor cut the tree.
Yeah, that's 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 probably it true that somebody cut the tree number thirteen from our side. But the whole work on that area is is on the neighbor's side. Okay?
Right, but.
That is that is on the neighbor's property.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you repeat yourself?
I I guess the question for me, chief, is how do we know that that tree actually got bent over and broken by? One of the trees that was there. I mean, I don't see a close up enough picture to figure that out.
Or there are pictures to show that.
Tree trees as a general statement, that looks to be approximately twenty four inches above the ground. Trees don't snap off twenty four inches above the ground of their own accord. That they generally have to be hit by something that fall, given the number of trees that were dropped immediately next to it, including stump thirteen. Uh, which was cut before we got there. Uh, it is extraordinarily likely that that tree was dropped as a result of the the tree in inappropriate or improper tree falling that occurred all around it. As a result, we removed it.
And and do we have a picture of before picture that shows it standing up earlier?
Uh, I I would have to dive through the the list. That that tree was freshly fallen though.
It was freshly fallen. Okay, that that was a question. Okay. Okay. And so I think we, anybody else have any questions?
And there's also the issue of the removal of the healthy trees. And uh, sorry, this was just one of the trees. Was there any mention of the other tree on the neighboring property? Of why that one was uh?
The one that's.
Verification on that one?
The broken off one?
Uh, there. So there are two trees on the neighboring property.
One, your father just said he cut. And what's the next one?
Um, I don't. Did you say that you cut it?
It was broken. It was.
I don't think that he said that he.
It was leaning. It was leaning all along from the beginning of the project. It was leaning and it needed removal. Mr. Winnaker is indicating or trying to say that we caused it to to fall or broke. Or to or we are we cause the breakage of that tree, which is not uh, true, actually. That tree was there all along from the beginning.
Uh, let me actually get clarification from my dad uh, about this. When you talked to Mr. Graham, was that tree fallen?
Yes.
Yeah. And so at that time, at that time, when we spoke with Gordon. Concerns about the property lines with regards to those two trees, along with a third one, were mentioned and discussed, but disregarded.
But you guys cut down the tree that shows the short stump there on the left underneath there.
Did you? Yeah, we cut that one. I believe we did cut that one. Uh, if I I'm I'm not sure, but probably I'm just probabilistic about that. But there were two leaning trees down there and but both trees. Now, after the survey, we found out that they do not belong to us.
So this is a different tree from the two that we've been talking about?
No, the same. They are the same.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Anybody else? Board members have any questions?
No.
And I also have a question about like the the other, the other trees. There were these three trees. Then there was a, there were four other trees. None of them were mentioned when speaking with Gordon.
But I but I think that the thing you have to realize that the chief mentioned was that. That all trees that are dead or dying are by definition mentioned because the the word is that the the. The instruction was you have to cut down and abate all trees that are dead and dying.
Okay, but those four trees were not dead, where and they were green. These four trees, four of these trees were tree. I tell you, I'll give you a more example about this. We received a notice regarding the dead tree in the south side of our property. And that's on in the pictures file. Uh, you can see also the notice regarding that one. On the on pages uh. I think we received the notice regarding that on. Uh, you see that notice that we see it on October twenty first. Pages nine to eleven from the B D F file I sent. The big, the one that has called forty six cedar letters, emails, pages one to twenty five.
It looks like this was in a file he sent.
Yeah, and uh. It uh, chose a similar survey to this sheet. And in that, on that page, uh, it shows that that did tree that was called or we we were given only fifteen days. To remove that tree and we found out that it was outside our property and we notified the the. M O F D of that, so we don't fall into the same mistake and we didn't touch it. And here they requested us to provide a proof that it is not inside our property and we did get the surveyor to do that.
Okay. Uh, President Jorgens, you were you mentioned about the uh, the administrative cost before.
Right.
Is there any uh? Any discussion from from the board perhaps on uh, on on talking about that any further?
I think that's a good topic. Personally, I if if I were, you know, I. I know this was a long process. I know there were lots of people that I'm sure have good intentions eventually at least. Uh, it took quite a bit longer to get it abated than it should have, but at least at the end, the people were trying things. I personally would think it would be a reasonable compromise to not charge the admin fee for this, even though we spent a huge amount of time doing the admin work. But if we wanted to think of a compromise, I see the chief snarling. That would be the thing that, you know, would seem like something to discuss at least.
Um, I I I don't think I would be in favor of of removing the entire admin fee, but. I'd be willing to discuss uh, perhaps reducing that fee, but not the mitigation cost at all.
I think we we have the resolution correct. Twenty one dash zero five. That we have to vote on first? Well, no, we could, we can discuss. We're we're deliberating the resolution to decide if that's the what resolution we want to. Read to or we want to modify.
Do you want to close public hearing before we start deliberation?
Okay, well, it do we have any other people that want to say anything in the public hearing? For the public comment period?
We do not have any more hands raised and we have not received any additional written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. Okay.
So, okay, close.
Is this the three of us here, guys? So.
Okay.
I do just need a motion to close to close the hearing now.
Okay, I'll make I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Also, well, I can. On favor?
Director Bates?
Hi.
Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Jex?
He recused himself.
Oh, yes. And President Jorgens?
Yes. Okay, so now deliberation. So. Director Danziger, you would.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gendelli. Oh, he he had raised his hand. He had raised his raised his hand again.
Okay, Mr. Gendelli?
Oh, yes, I would like to to mention in the picture that Mr. Winnaker mentioned that showed. That a lot of work before and after. We were planning, he showed the worst part. And we never had any access to any of these pictures, but we were planning, like I said. And the contractor was scheduling that and it was scheduled to to be Monday. Actually, because the the our work, the last time we worked was Wednesday. And some workers were coming just to do some clear and minor wo- work on September seventeenth. And the following one day, it would, they would finish the whole complete work, hundred percent.
And I'd also just like to add. I we we've been living in, you know, in Maraga for a long time and we really value this community. And I think it's quite clear that my dad has spent, you know, especially you can you can quantify it. It's twenty thousand dollars clear that my dad spent a considerable amount of effort and time. You know, being there and you know, I probably, I probably shouldn't have mentioned this. He didn't want me to mention this, but and actually, no, I I won't mention it. I just think that there's a lot that could be said here. All I want to say is that. I just want your empathy here, is that we spent twenty thousand dollars doing our best to comply. We've been meeting and trying to communicate and we have another abatement request. That we just received yesterday for another tree on that property. And even though the scope of the work kept on increasing without additional assessment, without additional abatement notices. Uh, you know, he kept trying to comply. And so I understand and really respect, and I'm so thankful for the work that the M O F D has been putting onto this property. But I think that, you know, the removing the administrative fee, I think that like that, that's. I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a really empathetic suggestion. I think that only makes sense considering how much effort has been put in by my dad. And my dad, like, I I I only recently moved in. I wish that I could have helped in the whole, this whole way through this whole thing. You know, he's, I I'd say he's he's an older guy. He's been working through this, putting in his own hours, trying really hard. And this, you know, this this amount, this fifteen thousand dollars, along with the money that has to be spent on the other, the other abatement. Means more loans for him. It's just, and it's clear that he's been spending so much time, so much effort on this property, trying to comply.
Okay, great.
Clear plans. He had clear plans to finish it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so board members.
Yeah, I I would like to ask just District Council. Is it within the uh? The scope of us as directors if we if we wanted to uh, address the uh, any of the costs?
Yeah, this matters entirely within within your discretion.
It is. Okay.
And we're we're discussing about a uh, fire hazard in a community. Um, it's been a huge topic over the last year or two. About the fire wise communities, about everyone being, you know, concerned neighbors, making sure your properties are taken care of. Um, and then we have a property that's not taken care of. It was discussed, it was notified. And we've gone through the process. I don't see the issue here, honestly. And we move forward with the resolution as written.
Well, I just think there were, there are some questions in my mind about.
Mine too.
About. You know. Him starting the work on the sixteenth, we doing the work on the seventeenth. Uh, and uh. You know, I I don't really question the trees that were taken out. Um, I'm just, just the timing of it all. It just. It's just not sitting right with me, just that that those final days when the work was was done. Uh, and I would be, I would be willing to uh, to adjust the admin fee. To some, to some other other amount, just.
Do you have a proposal for that? It's currently what, five thousand dollars we hear roughly?
What's that? Sorry?
It's currently roughly five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I I would, I would, I, you know, I'll just throw it out there. I I'd I'd be willing to uh, make the the administration fee uh. Uh, three thousand dollars.
I I would support that also.
I would not. I would like to keep it at full amount.
So um, there's only three of us here on this. Do, how does that work? Um, I'm just.
It's still a quorum. All we have to do is have somebody move it and second it and vote on it.
Okay, I I'll make a motion. Uh, that we um. For resolution number twenty one dash zero five uh, and the uh. That the administration fee uh, be uh, three thousand dollars.
I'll I'll second that. Before before you second that and hold on, we have a quick little discussion. That um, extra money for the fees that we've had to already pay for salaries and staff. To work on this project, we've it's been considerable. Um, is that money going to be now coming out of other projects, possibly the chipper program?
No, sir. It's lost opportunity cost. So this is other parcels of the fourteen thousand we're charged with inspecting and ensuring compliance on. These are other parcels that we did not get to as a result of the resources of this project consumed far beyond. Uh, its size relative to the rest of the community.
Yeah, I I just think on my end, I I just think there's too many questions still that we won't, we won't be able to answer at this point and um. I know it's not a lot um. From from the from the total amount, but I I think it's a, it's some effort to acknowledge that um. That that perhaps there was uh. Some, I I I know the owner made an effort. Uh, I know it took months. I know it was delayed. But I I would, I would be willing to uh, to make the administration fee uh, three thousand dollars. That's my motion.
And we have a second. So now I guess we've discussed it. Should we have a, Marcia, you want to call a vote?
Director Bates?
Nope. Nope.
Director Danziger?
Hi.
President Jorgens?
Hi.
Okay, so the resolution is now that we will adopt resolution number five as amended by the, uh, Director Danziger's to make the fee three thousand dollars, um, and confirming and adopting the reported costs incurred and then by the Maragav and the Fire District, innovating public nuisance on certain property within the district pursuant to help on safety code section fourteen nine one two.
Okay.
That is right, that part of the, of item seven point one.
If I may, the directors, we, we do need direction, this, this has happened before and will happen again, and if it's the board's pleasure that, uh, that if work is being done, that that would stay the, or to abate, we do need that direction to avoid future occurrences where there is a situation where work is being done, however, the parcel is not in compliance, and that having after moved through the process, the district moves forward. I, I do believe we need direction in that regard, because I, I don't think I have the authority to not do that work after it has been ordered, uh, but there's certainly been cases where the resident is doing something. However, the parcel is not in compliance after having gone through the full process.
I, I, I don't think this sets a precedent, I mean, I think this is a unique case, um, since I've been on the board at least, uh, and I, I just think there are questions, I, I think there are that way, I don't know that we can actually get answers. I just think the timing of it, that they started, you know, the, the whole timing of September sixteenth, seventeenth, uh, eighteenth, and being barred, I just think there were too many questions for me, and I think we gave, gave back a little bit. And I know it's not what they were asking for, but I, I think it was the right thing to do.
I, I don't disagree with that, sir, but my, my point more had to do with the board's pleasure with regard to work that is currently ongoing, whether that should override the order to abate the parcel, we, we do need direction on that, because currently we, we find ourselves when this inevitably will happen again, caught between two imperatives. One, the imperative of the, of the work which the board has ordered completed as a result of the lane hearing. And then secondly, the, the concern the board has that the resident is making progress towards it, incomplete progress, granted, but progress. And we need direction with regard to that, because otherwise we're left to, to try to decide which of the board's direction is more important.
So I guess my, my answer to that was, we aren't changing your direction on if you, if it needs to get done, you need to come do it. I think the problem in this situation was that the goalpost, because of the trees dying as rapidly as they die these days, the goalpost was potentially moving. Um, and, you know, in, in the time that it takes, clearly there were a lot of potential mistakes that had happened, but as far as I'm concerned, if something needs to get abated and you need to go do it, you should go do it, and it doesn't matter if it's in the middle of it or not. But people ought to be more proactive and get it done sooner. But, um, in this situation, I think there were another, enough other gray things that happened about, you know, whether there were green trees or not green trees, and nobody seems to have any evidence one way or the other about those things, so.
I, I disagree with that, sir, there were no green trees were cut, the photographic evidence shows that, and professional arborists kind of did not cut live trees.
Well, show me the picture then.
Would you go back, please, Marcia?
Yes.
And back again to the, the boom truck? To, and forward one, thank, uh, to the boom truck, please. You can, you can see the outline, the, the, on the left, the, the tree devoid of needles, and on the right, the tree with the, 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 the red, uh, or orange, uh, tinged, uh, rust needles, those are dead trees, sir.
Are they cutting the one that's immediately in front of the boom with the guy in it? That, I can't, I personally can't see the color on that to see whether that's, it's got a lot of, lot of leaves, or what do we call the green stuff on a tree? Or, or the, the needle light stuff on a tree, it has a lot of that, it's not, you know, it's not dead limbs. Might be dying, it might be brown, but it's not, it's not barren. I can't see the color.
But, yes, sir, there, there were no live trees cut on that site, sir.
Okay.
Well.
So Chief, you need direction to go move forward, correct?
I, I do, yes, sir, because we're, this inevitably is going to happen again, and, and I do need direction regarding if a resident is doing work after the property's been ordered abated, whether we should delay moving forward with the abatement in order to allow them more time. Uh, that, I, I just do not think I have the discretion to make that decision after the board has ordered the abatement.
As far as I'm concerned, I just gave you that direction, and so did Director Danziger, to say that is not what your direction is, your direction is to go do the work.
Yes, sir, understood.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, now we're on to the consent agenda items eight point one through eight point six. Do we have any public comment on those agenda items?
We do not have, uh, any hands raised, and we have not received any written public comment.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the board, so John, you're back, I see, anybody on the board, uh, have any? So I'm gonna, we're gonna close the public comment period on those, uh, those agenda items. Um, so now, do we have any board deliberation on the, uh, the consent agenda items?
Uh, no, I, I'd make a motion to accept, uh, item eight point one through eight point six.
You're muted, John. You're still muted. Now you're okay.
I second this motion.
Okay.
Director Bates?
Hi.
Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Jex? President Jorgens?
Hi. Okay, that is approved. Uh, then we get to item eight point, oh, I guess, so it was all in there. Uh, so then the regular agenda item nine point one, the public workshop, uh, the draft community wildfire protection plan. Do we have any, so I'm just gonna open the public workshop for this. And do we have any public comment on agenda item nine point one?
We do not have any hands raised right now. Uh, we do have one hands raised, I didn't know if we wanted to do the presentation first, or do the public comment. I have Jonathan Goodwin's hands raised.
Go for it, Jonathan.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be a lot more fair to me if, um, you'd allow me to comment after the presentation.
Oh, that's fine, happy to do that, yeah, I, I wanted to be responsive.
But, you, you, yeah, I, I understand, it's just you asked for comments, so I didn't want to miss, miss out and, uh, have it all roll by me, but I, I'd prefer to do it that way.
Okay, well, it's supposed to be a workshop, so we're, we're gonna be a little more informal about this then. So, uh, Chief, are you giving the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, the agenda we'll, we'll talk about tonight, um, is intended to be, uh, public workshop, potentially first of, of several as needed, uh, and, and want to walk through what we have done to, to get to this point, um, and really, as has previously been voiced, um, this is the, the, the first, um, open forum opportunity for public input. We staggered it that way specifically to allow presentations, that this is a dense document and a, a complex uh, topic, as well as the ability to hold the stakeholder meeting, but before we opened up the public workshop, next slide, please. So as we've discussed before, CWPP, next slide. Is intended to be all of these things, and really, I think the, the one that is, uh, the, the two that are most important there are in the middle, develops a shared understanding of local fire hazards, and then proposes an action plan to reduce fire risk. And obviously implied in the production, production of an action plan is that the projects that are called out are prioritized in order to target those that will have the greatest benefit to the greatest number of people at the lowest cost, cost being measured, uh, in this case, in staff effort, in dollars, and environmental impact, next slide, please. As we've talked about before, this report is made up of five sections, the sections are listed there, the, the most interesting, I think, is six, is point, uh, five point O, the action plan, and then, uh, we have the series of maps that have previously been identified, uh, and presented with the addition of the corrected fire risk maps, uh, which were added and helped inform the production of the draft action plan, uh, that was included in the packet, next slide, please. And next slide. So as we've discussed, we presented a draft report to the board in December, we held a series of community presentations. Uh, in conjunction with those presentations, we received input both from the input link that's listed there, as well as, um, during the presentations via the chat. We held a stakeholder meeting and received input from the stakeholders on February twenty-third. Uh, all of the invited, um, the, the large, uh, stakeholders, uh, participated with the exception of Caltrans, which had not attend. Uh, tonight is the first of the community workshop or workshops as needed, and then it would come back to the MOFD board with directed changes, and then for adoption, then to the county board of soup, uh, it goes down to the SCU unit chief, uh, for Calfire to review. Uh, and then we think it ought to be reviewed and updated about every three years, where we would be able to see the benefit of the work that has been done should show on the fire risk maps and, and should drive the discussion about whether the priorities should be revisited based on the work that has been previously completed, and/or if conditions have changed that, that warrant a rethink of the process, next slide, please. And next slide. So the fire risk assessment, um, we're gonna talk here about is, is fire risk, uh, in the absolute, and then corrected fire risk, which is, in this case, is fire risk as it pertains, um, to the values at risk. So as we've talked about before, fire is strictly a product of fuel, weather, and topography. And of those, fuel, specifically available fuel, which is most likely to carry the fire in a particular, uh, parcel or pixel, is the element which can be mitigated with the highest return on investments, we've talked about before. Uh, if there is likely to be a ground fire, doing work to remove healthy tree canopies is unlikely to negatively impact the fire spread rates, and therefore would not generate a high return on investment due to the lens of reduction of community risk, comprehensive reduction. Uh, the fire in our area that we are most concerned about, the most dangerous fire, is a fire that would occur during a Diablo wind event, primarily driven by winds out of the north and northeast. And then, as I mentioned above, when we do, for corrected fire risk, we have to identify the, the time and the place where fire poses the greatest concern. And in this case, the values at risk, in priority order, lives, and that being both, uh, lives static, and that, by, by that, I mean people in their homes, uh, and then lives mobile, uh, in, in their cars, uh, or any other means of transportation as they're executing an evacuation, that's of particular importance in our community, because of the suburban and semi-rural layout. Uh, the long distances, people have to travel over narrow roads, the positive evacuation routes, and the large number of people, uh, that will be reliant on a, a very small number of evacuation routes out of the community or to a community refuge area, um, where they would delay their evacuation until conditions improve. Next, we're concerned about property, uh, for, by and large, uh, we're, we're treating homes as a surrogate for live static, because that's what people will be, but the property and, and critical infrastructure is included. And then our, our last priority is concern about the environment, where we, um, have special status species or sensitive habitat, uh, and we can reduce the negative impacts of high intensity fire on those, I, I think it's a very important distinction. And when it comes to special status species and sensitive environment, is, uh, high intensity fire is very different than low intensity fire, uh, which we want to encourage and, and benefits the creation of a very few mosaic, which will reduce our exposure to catastrophic wildfire, next slide, please. So for the, the corrected fire risk max, maps, on the, the left, you see live static. Uh, this is using, uh, it does not value evacuation routes. On the right, you see lives dynamic, uh, it does not provide the, the same valuing to homes, and it, it adds a value for proximity to a critical evacuation routes, hence you see, uh, the bright red pixels there along Highway twenty-four and along Maraga Way, and in some of the areas that encroach upon the evacuation routes. Uh, of note, one of the things that was very positive is we went through the process of producing these maps, is if you look up into the, the north end of the community, specifically the down Sleepy Hollow, Bear Ridge, and down around Wagner Ranch, where we've done a significant amount of fuel reduction work, the satellite-based fuel inventory, specifically surface fuel inventory and the ladder fuel inventory, picked up the, the quality of work done there, and you see some of those, uh, sort of lime green or lighter green sections amidst, uh, and other areas that are otherwise red, uh, where it shows the benefits of the work we've done, that, that's tremendously gratifying that that work is, is being done at a scale that is registering uh, on satellite-based, uh, fuel inventory development. Uh, you'll note up to the, to the north there and, and down to the southeast, um, there are areas where there's a very high vegetative fuel load, but it, it's coated as green. And, and the reason it is, is that as we put in the different layers, and as we, we built out the risk maps here, uh, those areas have the potential for high intensity fire, but that high intensity fire is not in proximity to values of risk. Therefore, it, from a, um, prioritization standpoint, it's ranked lower, because while it's, it's always good to reduce fuel, and it would always be good to reduce the intensity of a fire in that area, we believe the work should be prioritized in those areas that are in proximity to the values of risk. And I would like to call out the great work done by, by two of our firefighters, uh, Kevin Brasham and Steve Rognes, who, who developed this, uh, and were able to build out the pancake stack that we used, uh, to create the layers, that they, they developed those skills and, and honed the ability to do that while deployed on a number of large fires over the summer and fall, uh, where they were able to learn in an on-the-job training setting, and came out of it with capabilities that, that heretofore, uh, we had to contract out for, so I'm really impressed with the work they've been able to do. And I believe these maps, uh, really set the stage for, uh, clearly and in a, in a, a simple to digest graphic depiction, showing where we believe that the greatest risk lies, and these maps have been used to inform the, the modification of the, the previous draft, uh, currently draft, but updated, um, priority, uh, projects that are listed in section five, based on where we see areas of red, um, and, and all of the various elements that went into developing these maps, next slide, please. So the way ahead, uh, next slide. So, um, tonight, public workshop input meeting, uh, and we'll see whatever input comes out of this in whatever direction, uh, the board provides with regard to changes. The input received to date, um, that, that input in the form of the chat and in the form of the link on our website, uh, that's been updated, among other things, uh, there was a point made that we, we used in two locations, we mentioned, um, the, the restoration of protection of native grasses, and was pointed out that, uh, native grasses are vanishingly rare, uh, in this area. There happens to be some now that we've restored in and around Bear Ridge, in conjunction with the California Native Plant Society and our burning program up there, but as a general statement, native grasses are not a part of the landscape, so that reference was excluded. And a number of other points that were made, uh, that they were reviewed and modifications to the draft CWPP made accordingly. Uh, so that from tonight, not only is there the opportunity for, for input from the public and direction from the board, there's the opportunity to schedule additional meetings as needed, uh, it would be helpful to, to pick a date, so we can, we can get the, have a sense of how far out we have, and from that, we can identify what additional topics, uh, or which topics that were covered, uh, previously need to be revisited. Uh, we'll receive any additional input the board provides, uh, and then we'll determine how much time is required in order to, to move forward, um, with bringing, uh, a modified product back either for additional hearings and workshops, or for the board's, uh, review and adoption, next slide, please. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or to open the, the public workshop and, and take notes on public input.
I'm unmuting, um, Jonathan Goodwin.
Okay, I've unmuted myself as well.
Yeah.
You ready?
Yes.
Um, first of all, I, I'd like to know how many people, members of the public are on this call?
We have, we have eight attendees.
Who are not district affiliated?
I don't know that they have to put their affiliation there.
No, I mean, that, that aren't you guys, that I'm watching?
We have eight other attendees, yes.
Alright, good, alright. Um, so first of all, sorry, I just dropped my notes, um. Well, first of all, I, I wanted to, to say a little bit about myself and, and my background, to hopefully give a little bit of weight to my comments. Um, for, you know, over a dozen years, I, um, worked on, uh, fire, wildfire mitigation matters, networked quite a lot in, uh, in this area, went to an untold number of meetings, and also did a few things. Uh, just to give a sense of the scope of the meetings, I don't know if you, any of you guys remember the Arinda Public Safety Advisory Commission? I wouldn't be surprised if you didn't, but, uh, it was quite active for several years, I went to dozens of their meetings. Uh, likewise, their counterpart in Lafayette, the Lafayette Emergency Preparedness Commission. I went to a couple of UAWC meetings, if you know what that is, uh, meetings at County OES. Uh, meetings for years, many years, Diablo Fire Safe Council, served on the council for a couple of years, was co-chair of. Was co-chair of the group that put together the first CWPP for the county. And I just want to note in appendix F of that, uh, there's notes about Canyon. Which include that in 2004, I organized the first multi-agency evacuation drill 2004 in the East Bay where we used the 10s, the telephone emergency notification which is controlled by CWS. Most people seem to be calling it CWS these days. And also the fire district, there were various people from the fire district involved, including apparatus.
Three minutes pretty rapidly, I'm just, you know.
I thought we were being informal. I didn't realize that this was a three minute affair. This wasn't made clear. Is this, you're telling me I've got a minute left?
I, I, I said you were, your three minutes started when you started, so.
I didn't hear three minutes. Um, I thought we were being informal, so I was giving you, I'd never had a chance to, to discuss these things with you before, so I was just laying them out. Um, you know, if you're going to cut me off, I mean, this just seems to de-ize your exercise.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Go ahead, Jonathan, we're, you know, just, just be aware of that.
Well, I, I, yeah, I'm not trying to, I don't think I'm wasting people's time by telling you that I've had a hell of a lot of experience with this. Now, I've said that before, but I've never backed it up with facts, but I'll, I'll move on. I, I, I take your point. So the one thing, one thing I want to say is that in my opinion, based upon my experience, you've got one chance to do this right. I know people feel that because of the, the change in the climate and blah, 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 and political climate, blah, blah, blah. That this stuff has a whole lot of weight behind it that it never did before. This stuff being the imperative to mitigate wild, uh, wildland fire risks in, in the, in the East Bay. Based on my experience, I kind of doubt that. I think it will go up and down. And I think that it really is imperative for you guys to do the best job you can at, at the beginning. And needless to say, what's been done is like thousandfold more than what's been done previously. It's not only better than nothing, it's way, way, way better than nothing. There's been, you know, just, you know, historically unprecedented amount of effort in this, all based on the fire chief. And my concern is that when he moves on, it just, it will take a very different character and I understand, I understand that's a couple of years on, but I choose to have a long view on this. So what I'm trying to say about getting it right the first time is this. This is my point number one really, and of two only. That it still, I mean, some people like the chief have heard me say this routinely, but it's still disturbs me, the lack of understanding by the district of what has happened before in other jurisdictions. Because if you don't know what worked, you don't know, you have much less of a perspective on what you're doing. On the possibilities of longevity of what you're doing. If you know that certain things were done in other areas and they just were unsustainable. Even though you think, you know, you're intelligent and so on, and I'm not doubting that at all. I'm just saying that some of these things transcend mere intelligence. You know, the, the experience counts for something. There are people all over the Bay Area who've been involved in this for a great long time. And to not understand what they have learned in the past, I think puts the district at a disadvantage. It's my personal opinion and consequently, I feel that people rather the, the district really should make an effort to understand what has gone on. For instance, with the wildfire protection assessment district in Oakland, it ran for 10 years. You know, I've talked to the chief, he kind of sums it up in a few sentences, but there was 10 years of experience there. You know, some things went well, some things, some things did not. But there were things learned with the, you know, Marin Fire Safe Council, with the Santa Clara Fire Safe Council and the entities and that. There's an awful lot to be learned and doing what you think is best at the moment, essentially shooting from the hip, not without skill. But without this broader perspective, I think puts the district, gives the district much less of an advantage in terms of the long-term efficacy. Okay, that's point number one. Point number two is what I said last meeting, so I won't belabor it. I don't buy the prioritization. I don't think it's, and I don't mean to be aggressive about this, but just trying to be clear. The places that should be prioritized are where people are most likely to die. And that is not necessarily represented by vegetation. There are, uh, a number of factors that should be weighted. Some are more important than others. But the places in the district that can be, I mean, you know, it doesn't make sense to point to someone and said, you're the most likely, you know, place of the district, you know, where people are going to die. I mean, I'm not saying to put it in those terms. But there should be, the priority should be weighted toward people who have the most disadvantaged situation. Who have the highest number of risk factors, poor water supply, a long response time, bad egress, steep slopes, heavy vegeta- hazardous vegetation, heavy fuel loading. So on. That, to me, makes a much more targeted approach than just making maps of vegetation and such. So just to very briefly recap, number one, I'm having a, a deeper sense of the history of this stuff and what's actually sustainable, what's actually, you know, looking ahead, what's probably going to continue working, continue functioning in five years, in 10 years. What can we, how can we weight our effort in, in those, in those areas, which is, and this is asking a lot, it's a very mature question, requires a very mature discussion. And, and I don't mean to overburden you guys, but I, I I don't think that I, well, and I hope that I'm not, you know, I mean, that's up, up to you to decide. And the second is about the prioritization. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you. Marsha, do we have other people who have raised their hands?
We do not have any other hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Okay, so do we want to close the, well, you know, I mean, it's a workshop, so I guess we can close the public comment on, on non-point one.
Chief, uh, in regards to one thing that, uh, that Jonathan brought up in his talk, um, this, this document, the Community Wildlife Protection Plan. It, it's my understanding that that we, it's not a one-shot deal. I mean, this is a dynamic document, right? I mean, can you just talk a little about the, the document and be, being able to to adjust it or, or discuss it further, you know, down the line? I mean, what is, what's the process on on this plan?
Yes, sir. There's no statutory limitation on, on opening it up. The fact that it does require board approval and board supervisors' approval establishes a threshold of some sort. I, I argue it's pretty low and it's very likely to be passed on consent by the board of SUCs. Suggesting that it could be opened up at any time. Is absolutely intended to be a dynamic document. However, we tried to lean into it enough, understanding this is a first.
Yeah.
While we reviewed those who've gone before, include going back to the, the, the Contra Costa Hills Fire Protection Association, which was formed following the 1923 Berkeley Hills Fire as an attempt to galvanize the communities of the East Bay and all the subsequent efforts to include the Blue Ribbon Commission in 81, formed after the eucalyptus die-off in the late seventies from the freeze. And all the stuff that, that followed the 1991 tunnel fire, we tried to learn from those and read all of the things that were written and spoke with many of the authors in, in many cases. However, uh, with, as with anything, when you do it for the first time, we're very likely to discover over time that there's things that could be done better or there's things that should be modified. But really the, the idea behind it is that it provides a three-year plan, prioritize list of projects and, and focuses us on, uh, on, on some agreed upon framework regarding what the prioritization of what those things are. As I mentioned before, one of our great challenges currently is that everyone who contacts the district with a wildfire concern or specifically a vegetation concern, as we saw at the item earlier tonight, which was initiated by resident complaints. The resident is necessarily viewing the problem through the lens of what they can see from their home or from their driveway or from in front of their house. And as a result of that, as we are about to experience, as we move in to enforcement season following the June 1st deadline, we're going to be inundated with one-off complaints regarding an item, a parcel, a tree. Uh, and we struggle with how to maintain an overarching plan that has a strategic element to it and addresses those things that are going to have the greatest benefit for the greatest number of people, precisely to Jonathan's point. Those things that are most likely to result in either deaths or the loss of property. As we try to focus on those, it, it's awfully hard to explain to the person who's not on the priority list why their section of the community is not a priority. And while the wildfire threat that they face, while very real and significant to them, because if your house burns, that's a major fire, no matter how little else burns. It's very hard to explain to them that, well, your area isn't exactly a priority and we're focusing our limited resources on these others areas. The intent of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan is that agreed upon framework, an opportunity for a public discussion about how we define the wildfire threat. And once we have come to common ground on what the wildfire threat is, then how the, the exposure to the community is going to be mitigated in a prioritized manner. It, my hope is that the current plan would make it through three years. That said, were there to be an infusion of resources, either from within the community, uh, having to do with people establishing defensible spaces required by the fire code, but certainly not present on every parcel. And taking on, um, not required, but certainly recommended home hardening projects to reduce the potential for home ignitions. And if those sort of things accelerate faster than we anticipate, if more resources become available than what we currently have available, causing this project or these, this process and these projects to move forward more quickly, then it would absolutely make sense to open it up, um, short of the three-year cycle, to review the work that's been done, to take a look at what, what is next, how has the work we have done, how has that changed? The comprehensive look at the risk and the exposure to wildfire. Uh, then it would make sense. I, I, that said, uh, given the size of the problem, given the, the length of time it can take to mitigate a single parcel and the, and how many of them there are, I think it's highly unlikely that we will make it through the, the current list of projects within that three-year timeframe, but there'd be nothing preventing, uh, the board or for staff to recommend to the board that the, the CWPP be reopened and to go through that process. I, I, the only caution I would add there, however, all of these things take staff time and resources and, and staff time and resources that go into any one thing are then not available for the other things. And, and we do, we do struggle, uh, up against the constraints of, of how many people and how much time are available to address, uh, what is a, a large problem throughout, uh, 14,000 parcels of the district.
Question, uh, is it chief? The, assuming it's implemented and approved as drafted, what, what's the financial implications in terms of resources to the district? I assume the funding, whatever we approve is largely funded by us?
No, sir. There are no financial implications. This is not, uh, this isn't a budget document. This doesn't set budget priorities. This, it, it's explicitly stated at the end of section four that the elements included in the action plan are contingent upon either funding or upon action on the, the part of the, the parcel owners, uh, and, and from bottom to top, that's small individual parcel owners. Uh, large, uh, interior islands, um, and to include the undeveloped parcels that the people hold as investments. As well as then the surrounding wilderness lands largely owned by East Bay Parks, East Bay Mud. And then, um, the, the state-owned land that cuts through the heart of the district, uh, along the road sides of highway 24. But there are no, uh, the district is not, uh, is not assuming responsibility for the execution of these projects. And there is no implications for the budget, uh, with the CWPP adoption.
I, I do note that, um, from the community meetings, there were, um, questions asked and and a, a, a good percentage of the questions were specific to, uh, the historic community of Canyon. And I know that presents a, a, a unique, um, area within our district. And this, you know, document, I mean, it can't address every, every issue in every community like the chief was talking about and I, I, and, you know, the chief's answers on, on some of those questions were, you know, good question, we're going to have to follow, I'm looking at them, so, you know, we'll have to follow up and, you know, there's implications for, for legislation, so. You know, this document is not all encompassing. Um, it's a, it's a great beginning. And, um, what Jonathan just said too, it's gone from, you know, not having one to what we have here and it's a, it's a great start and I think we're all aware of the, uh, the hazardous conditions in Canyon. For, you know, residents that are, that are concerned about that. Um, I drove up in there to probably, I think it was last week where we were doing the prescribed burning and, uh, burning piles. And I know more of that's going to go on, so, you know, I would just tell Canyon residents that. I, I think the district understands the issues in there and, um, work is being done and, and if, if, um, hopefully if, if this new round of, uh, of grants from the state comes through, the district has asked for approximately $8 million and, and much of that would, uh, would impact, uh, a, a part of it at least would impact the Canyon area, so. That's all I want to say on that.
So I guess my, my general thought, Jonathan, I think you had a, a good point and, and the chief's, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of, uh, former uh, agencies and groups and work groups and fire prevention things all over the state. Meaning that they were really a hot topic at one point and then they sort of, you know, died down and, and, you know, people forgot. And I hope that, and I think I've heard the chief say this a number of times, that, you know, this is a, this is a, a an overall plan and a prioritization of effort. And I think the way that we both implement it and maintain it is through the fire code and enforcement. Because I think a lot, I got to guess that a lot of those areas that had, you know, at one point, you know, I think even sleepy hollow used to have, you know, fire wise areas years ago, uh, before it was sort of popular. And, and then it fell way behind and it's catching up now. But I, I think in, in prior administrations, there was a lot less enforcement, a lot less awareness of the need for fire prevention and certainly a lot less, uh, enforcement that we had. So I'm hoping, and enforcement obviously is the, the final straw. You, you hope to get there with the carrot instead of the stick. But I'm hoping that that's what, that we will continue to have administrations going forward and boards and fire chiefs and things and fire marshals that want to maintain the good work that we're getting started here and hopefully we will finish in the foreseeable future. Or at least make a lot of progress on and then be able to keep it maintained. So what was my two bits worth? Any other, um, board comment?
Well, um, I, I just want to know a little bit more about the process from here. So I know it has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors to adopt it. And with the document as we have now, would that be what would go? Is there an opportunity? I mean, we're not going to vote on it today. I, I, I don't think. Did we just give you direction of what, where to go from here?
Yes, sir.
And if there's, um, if there's like small edits, I'm, I'm thinking grammatical or things like that. Can we just, we don't have to do those in an open forum, right? We can just submit those?
Yes, sir. Any, any edits you'd like, you send those to me. And then once the board establishes when it would like this brought back, we will bring it back before the board, either for additional workshop uh, or for a hearing and adoption at the board's direction.
Those should be provided, by the way, don't, do not CC all board members, send them directly to.
Okay. And so, um, And so this is the workshop, and what what's the timeline? Do we have a timeline?
It's at your directions.
Okay. I'm I'm, you know, as as far as the document itself goes, from what I've reviewed, I I don't, you know, after the participation, we've we've, you've done all the 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 public workshops and in the various entities. I I personally don't see the need for an additional workshop unless other directors do. So, you know, just start the discussion here on the next steps for the for the chief, at least.
Given, given the time it's already had and the feedback we've had from others, and you know, the number of times it's been in front of the board and in front of this workshop and other times that people have had to comment, it seems like we're, it's it's a good document, and I don't see a need either. I agree with Director Danziger that I don't see need for more, at least for us, having workshops. If you, chief, if you think other organizations, you know, in other venues need a workshop, that's fine, but I don't see it.
It seems like to me, I would think with the time that we've spent and has been spent, would be appropriate to proceed next meeting to agenda it for approval to move to the next step. And and I I just, just for procedures again, I, the Board of Supervisors, I know it's noted in here, does this, does this also have to go to the town of Ragga and the city of Arinda?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay.
So, Chief, are you just looking for our our guidance? Is that all we're looking for tonight?
Yes, sir. Need your directions in order to to either make directed changes, schedule additional meetings as needed, or bring it forward for hearing and adoption at subsequent meeting, and if so, which means?
So it sounds like at least three of us have felt that you should do the last thing you just said, bring it, you know, bring it forward, et cetera. Director Bates, do you have any comments?
Nope, sounds great. Bring it forward.
Yeah, that sounds unanimous, Chief.
Understood. Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Best kind of direction to get, right? Okay. So now I guess we are done with item nine point two. We can move on to the open the public workshop for the long-range financial forecast. Do we have any public comment on agenda item nine point two? Or we could certainly have public comment since the workshop afterwards also, so don't feel like you have to make a comment now if you want to do it later.
Right now, I do not have any hands raised, and I am working on pulling up the PowerPoint.
So given that it's supposed to be a workshop, I'm not gonna close the public comment period, we're just gonna do it as a live thing, if that's okay. So is it, Gloria Ann, Chief, who's the presenter of this thing?
Gloria, thank you.
Yes, President Jordan, members of the board, good evening. The long-range financial forecast has been updated. There's five slides in this presentation. Tonight is an opportunity for the board to listen to public input and provide direction to staff. The forecast was updated using similar methodology and similar assumptions as used last year. The forecast is scheduled for adoption at the next board meeting. Next slide, please. The long-range forecast covers a forward-looking ten-year period. The forecast is separate operating budget. The annual operating budget will be prepared based on board direction given during this long-range financial forecast process. This will become a more clear when we get to slides four and five. Next slide, please. The significant assumptions used in the forecast are listed on this slide. Starting on the left side with revenue. For fiscal year twenty twenty-two, property tax revenue was forecast by H D L, the district's property tax consultants. H D L projects an increase of four point two seven percent in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Property tax revenue is then projected to increase in the forecast two percent, then three and a half percent thereafter. Those are the same assumptions used as last year. Ambulance revenue is projected to increase two percent, then one point five percent thereafter. Net strike team revenue is projected at five hundred thousand dollars, which is an average of the past four years, then projected to increase three percent thereafter. Looking at the right-hand side of the slide for expenditures, beginning with salaries and overtime. For fiscal year twenty twenty-two, salaries are projected using the current salary schedule, then projected to increase three percent thereafter, the same assumptions as last year. Versus Sarah, they prescribe five-year projections from Siegel, their actuary. So the five-year projections are listed on the slide. Booked contributions are included each year of the forecast based on the full actuarially recommended contribution. For the pension rate stabilization fund, contributions are included each year using a discount rate of six point two five percent. Finally, at the bottom of the slide, I draw your attention to line thirty-four of the forecast, which projects the district's general fund unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of revenue. The district has a long-term goal to maintain a minimum of fifty percent. The forecast projects this goal would be achieved in fiscal fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Next slide, please. Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Gloria. So there's a couple of items on which we need board direction. First of all, is the pension obligation bonds, those have been paid using property tax revenue. Those bonds were taken out in two thousand and five, they'll be expiring with a the last full payment being the current year we're in, next year, that they will reduce to one point seven, one point six million dollars, meaning there'll be an additional two point one million dollars in property tax that will go into the general fund as a default. And in the subsequent year, in addition to the the two million dollars less of a payment in the upcoming year, there'll be that last partial payment will have been made, and there'll be an additional one point seven, meaning that there'll be approximately combined between approximately three point seven will become available in the subsequent year that has not been available since approximately two thousand and five due to the payments on the P O B bonds. Board direction will be required with regard to what to do with that money in the absence of direction. That money will continue to to transfer into the general fund, where it will move towards the board-directed goal of establishing a fifty percent operating reserve. Next slide, please. The other item upon which we need board direction has to do with capital projects. The the current long-range financial forecast assumes that Fire Station Forty-one and Administration will be rebuilt in the near future, and that there'll be a significant remodel of Station Forty-five. Of note, both of these locations and the the facilities were built at a time that daily staffing was two, and there were no women in the fire service. They're not only old, but the facility is just not appropriate for the number of folks we have working out of them in the current environment, and the fact that we have that we have members of both genders working in those locations. The current assumption is that these will be funded using debt, that's the assumption that's been included in the prior years long-range financial forecast, and and in the absence of direction, staff has left that that same assumption in the in the forecast. There are other options besides issuing debt. However, the if left to its own devices, the fire flow tax revenue, which flows directly into the capital projects, and it's the sole source of funding for that fund, will not be sufficient to to pay for the project in the near future. The other opportunities to fund it would either be to use funds from the general fund, redirect the P O B revenue, the the revenue that was formerly used to pay P O Bs, direct that into capital projects, consider issuing debt, which is the assumption that's currently modeled, obviously any combination of the above, or to defer the the capital projects. Our current debt, in addition to the P O Bs, our apparatus, is approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year in apparatus debt service. That will be paid off in year twenty-two, twenty-three. And Station Forty-three, which constitutes an additional three hundred thousand dollars per year in debt service, which make up the the two debt service lines you see moving beyond the the P O Bs. Those will be paid off, Station Forty-three will be paid off in twenty thirty-one. So we we do have, we we will, over time, start to accumulate money in the capital projects fund to the tune of about seven hundred thousand dollars a year, following the the payoff of the apparatus debt in twenty-two, twenty-three. But we do need board direction with regard to either the willingness to, or the the district's ability to issue debt for capital projects, or how to dispose of the money that was formally used to to service the P O Bs, or to defer the capital projects, so that we can model that appropriately. As I mentioned, that the current model assumes issuing debt for Station Forty-one, Admin, and Forty-five. And if that is not the the guidance or the the direction of the board, we would update the model and the long-range financial forecast to reflect the debt had not been issued, and you would not see that debt service in our years.
Chief, you you mentioned that the debt on Station Forty-three would be paid off in twenty twenty-one?
Twenty thirty-one, sir.
Oh, thirty-one.
Yes, sir, fifteen-year debt.
Okay.
And and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, it concludes our presentation.
Board members, questions?
The current forecast shows debt, and I think it was about three hundred thousand a year? Assuming how how long?
Gloria, please jump in, but fifteen years is our our general, our planning assumption for for our capital project and form of bill.
So, Chief, you you made a comment about the, you know, wondering what to do with the with the money that's has historically been spent on paying off our pension obligation bonds. Maybe it would be, first off, I think the current model assumes it just goes into the general fund, right?
Yes, sir. Oh, any additional revenue in the absence of guidance reverts to the unrestricted reserve.
So there's not really an extra couple million bucks a year for the foreseeable future, it it's already being spent, basically.
Yes, sir.
When I look at the annual general fund surplus, you know, in the first year, it's six hundred thousand dollars, it's not one point seven million dollars, it's six hundred thousand dollars. The next year, it happens to be a bigger number, but then it goes back down. So i- in reality, we we've already spent them, it's already in the budget, it's being spent.
Yes, sir, largely, yes, sir.
The only thing you did, oh, go ahead, it is correct.
No, go ahead, Don.
In the modeling, it shows a debt payment, but it shows, did not show the construction and the thing going through the capital fund. That, like like we did Station Forty-three, if I if I looked at the modeling historic, that those dollars, as they were spent, ran through the capital fund.
Yes, sir, that, Gloria, please correct me, but I believe that was board direction, which was changed two years ago now.
And so why, I would like to see it done the same way, and see what the implications are in terms of what kind of transfer would be required in order to do it without debt, and what what the implications would be.
So, yeah, for me, I guess the the way I do this is we have, you know, our adware taxes, you know, running along at a pretty normal increase. And and we've got a, you know, a ten million dollar construction bill that we're gonna have. We don't have a lot of extra money, we have, you know, a new union contract that's coming up, and who knows what the answer to that's gonna be? And it's uncertain at the moment. And the idea of taking on, assuming that we're gonna take on debt, you know, a a lot of the other districts around us that are doing well don't have debt, for example, and we do already have debt. And it makes a pretty big difference if you don't allow the debt, how soon we could rebuild Station Forty-one? Like a big difference in how long it would take, you know, instead of doing it in, you know, I think you currently have it in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, meaning sort of this year. If it's a ten million dollar thing, and you we can look at the surpluses that we have here, and you, we're currently spending seven hundred thousand dollars a year, so you could add seven hundred each one of those. You know, it's gonna be five or six more years at least until we could afford to, even with these numbers, to to redo Station Forty-one. So I think we should have minimum model it and show what happens if we don't have the debt. Because I'm personally not in favor of adding more debt to our organization, you know, and I guess the other question I would have, Gloria Ann, what, we we currently already have pledged a number of our fire stations against the Station Forty-three debt, is that right?
Yes, two stations are used as collateral for Station Forty-three.
Which which two?
I'll check.
If it's forty-two and forty-four is the the newest and the best condition.
So it's gonna be pretty hard to use forty-one as collateral, and we're gonna tear it down. So what are we gonna use as collateral?
So I did, what we could do, if we did board once more detail, we can bring in Brandis Tolman, who is the people, the firm that helped assist us with financing in the past for Forty-three. I have reached out to them, and the district does have some alternatives for collateral that we could use. So and they can explain it more, and I can provide more information.
What what kind of collateral do we have?
We certainly would let the experts speak to that, sir, but when the the last time we contacted them, I believe this question was raised two years ago. We spoke to them at that time, they they, in their professional opinion, was that the district would not have, would not experience any challenges issuing debt, but we'd certainly be happy to to bring them before the board if there's more detailed questions to be answered.
Yeah, I'm just not generally thinking that we want to have debt in the first place, so.
I I would just like to see it modeled, and that'll help us, I think, determine either timing, but also determining what real options we really do have.
Yes, sir.
We we need a few scenarios, instead of having a point estimate, you know, this is normally you you show up, we we've done it in the past, you have scenarios on these kind of things to see what what impact changes and certain variables have to the output of the model.
Because evaluating it, it it would be helpful, I think, I would assume, anyone who wants to finance is gonna wanna look at some modeling as well.
I I guess the other thing that I would find useful, since we're, you know, it's a workshop here. At the moment, we have the general fund balance, you know, each year. And as we have discussed a whole bunch of times in the past, that is not our lowest point in the year, it actually is, you know, just happens to be our year-end number that we get. And and there are usually a time in, I don't know, late in the fall or December, when when we get, we either have to go into the teeter fund or not. And so for me, it would be interesting to have a line up here that shows how how bad things get at the worst point in the year, and under a system point number that says are, you know, add a line between line three and line four that says, here's the lowest balance we would expect in our general fund for the year. And it might not, it might be somewhat hard to figure out, but we can at least get in the right zip code for that kind of thing.
Yeah, the other thing is, the thing that threw us into the teeter plan last time was the funding on the reimbursement.
Expecting revenue, yes, sir.
Where we had to fund that receivable for a longer period of time than normal. And so if we, if we end up in this situation where we get it, you know, another grant for eight million dollars, or whatever it is, or other projects, where we're gonna have to fund and then have reimbursement delayed, we're gonna need capital in order to be able to just handle those kinds of opportunities. So I think there's some additional modeling that needs to be done in terms of what we really, what capacity we will have, and under what circumstances we'd have it.
And then for me, you know, so if we we currently have strike team revenue, it says net of operating or overtime costs. So we have the net revenue number there, does that mean we don't have the net cost down below also? Meaning the salaries, it was left out of, is left out of revenues, and it's also left out of salaries?
Correct. The strike team would be with overtime, so the strike team revenue is net of the strike team overtime.
Right, so it's never shown anyplace on the model, I guess is my point, the revenue. Or the salaries that are going out because of that isn't showing anywhere in the model.
I'm sorry, I I couldn't understand the question.
Salaries that are going out for overtime for strike team aren't shown anywhere in the model.
Correct.
Neither the revenue or the expense is being shown. And I guess I would find it useful, if we, instead of saying it's net, I put the gross number there and then put the cost below it. So and then come up with a net number, and then do the same thing with the salaries, so that we can really see what the total salary, what our total salary cost is going forward.
Gloria Ann, the other thing relating to that that would be helpful to me is how long on the strike team revenue, again, do we care, we we pay the salaries, we make the submissions? How quickly do we get reimbursed?
There's there's no rhyme or reason to that, sir, we. There's there's no rhyme or reason to that, sir. We, the most recent, you know, there's a, an update on that later tonight, but the most recent one dates to deployments in November, the most recently paid, and the longest outstanding dates to June. So it it really has to do with with which pile of F forty twos is processed first up at OES.
That, that's another receivable that we have to carry, we pay out and then recover later. And so that's what, another thing that could throw us into the teeter plan again, in terms of a timing and in terms of borrowing. Because if if most of that occurs in the summer or fall and we get reimbursed in the, in the winter or spring, we have to have the funds to carry that for that period of time.
Yes, sir. Strike team outlays generally align with the low point of revenue preceding the the large infusion in the second or third week of December.
Right.
Well, that's going to impact that line I asked for that shows how low things got. I guess the other thing, we currently have, oh, I had to, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if if the, I assume the the modeling that we've done so far, the one that's the draft, is a cash one. There's, it it's it's on a cash basis, not on an accrual basis.
No.
No?
No, it's on the modified accrual basis, so effectively the same type of accounting that is for the comprehensive annual financial report and for the budget.
Because on the, on the pension line, there there are two small pension amounts. I think it's a hundred thousand and two hundred, about three hundred that relate, I think, to the non pensioned salaries that were occur, will be occurring in two thousand twenty one and twenty, and we are not showing the pension cost of social debt until the next year. So I assume that that was it showed that the salaries in one year and it showed the pension in another year for those salaries.
Well, I I'm not familiar with what you're asking about. Can you took it the specific line, please?
Let me try and pull it up here. It's it's, I guess, if you put, you have the ability to, Marcia, to put the forecast up on the.
Yes, I can, I can, I'll just need a moment to do that.
That's little.
You with my reading glasses, I can't get that.
There you go. Okay, it's down, move it up, it's on the you see.
Why do you switch tabs? There you go.
Okay, you see in that, in the gray column, there's nine million and then there's a million one. Salary is non safety and then overtime. And then if you go down, where you're looking at the pension contributions, serious. You see over in the next year, a hundred and thirteen thousand for payment, non or normal cost. First time we see that pop up and then a hundred and four thousand three twenty six.
Right, the reason because in the long range forecast, last time, the board requested to break out the safety versus the non safety. However, we don't account for it that way. So that's why in the, the stuff in the past in the gray columns, we don't have that in our accounting system because it's just all together, because that's how we pay it to Cessera. So those, so it's just projected on a forward basis based on the actuarial valuation. I don't have actual cost for that in the past.
Right, but but the, I assume that relates to the million one and the two hundred and thirty two.
Correct. Non safety, Cessera employer payment lines twenty four and twenty five are directly related to line sixteen salaries, non safety.
Right, and so that there's no no pension benefit reflected in that fiscal year.
Okay, well, there is a pension benefit, right? It's not in the gray column because we don't account for it that way.
So you're saying that it's 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 incorporated in the three million four sixty five?
Correct.
So you're just breaking out something because it it, the the pension payment for the next year shows an increase of a three million five and then three million six, so I, that was a normal progression. I didn't assume. So what you're saying that I I just assumed that when there was nothing down below in that column, like twenty one, for those two items, that there was no pension benefit reflected.
I think they just didn't, it didn't fill in the history on that one, it sounds like. So I have another question for you, Gloria. I'm flying, I don't know, I guess it's forty nine, the the debt service fund balance in twenty twenty eight, twenty nine, nope, nope, wrong one, so I'm going to look a little further. Oh, I'm sorry, the capital fund balance. So we have a negative number for our capital fund balance in twenty eight, twenty nine? How how can you do that? Where's the money go? Doesn't have any debt. We can't have negative numbers on this for fund balances.
So you're on line forty three, that we're looking at?
Uh, yeah, well, forty three, forty nine, whichever way, whichever number it is, yeah.
Right, it goes to negative four hundred ninety seven thousand dollars that year.
Yeah, but but it's a fund, so where the money had to, you can't just have a, it doesn't have debt, so where where's the money?
It would come from the general fund.
But shouldn't we show that then?
Right, we could. I mean, if the board wants to direct that send general fund revenue to capital projects fund, so there wouldn't be a deficit in that fund that year, then absolutely we can do that.
But it's not that there's a deficit, it's actually have a negative fund balance. You can't have, you can't have a negative fund balance. The money has to be someplace. You you spent more than you had.
For in that, yes, correct, in that fund, you would end up spending more than there is, and that generates what's called a due to, due from, which is basically a borrowing from the general fund.
Right.
It's the general fund would have thirty four million dollars of unassigned fund balance that year. There there would be sufficient funds to cover that negative in the capital projects fund.
Okay, but since we're taking money out of, you know, we, we transfer money out of that on a pretty regular basis, don't we? That's the blue line that's in there for, you know, it comes out of the debt service fund because we get money from other things for our debt service fund. So, I mean, it's all, it's all money. Someplace you have to show that we really don't have, because otherwise that number never shows up in a balance, right?
No, it does, right? Because then it flows out of there in the next year.
No, but in that year, where's where's the money come from that year?
From the general fund.
It's going to come from the from the unassigned, right?
Yeah, but we don't show that. That's my point. You can't have a you can make it zero. You you have to somehow be able to, you know, loan it money, do something, you have to show that loan someplace. Otherwise, it looks like we have, you know, it looks like we have more money than we do in the general fund.
Correct, correct. I I, you know what, that leads into what I was going to ask. Let me just ask this question too. In the, in the unassigned general fund balance, as Gloria, and you said, in twenty five, twenty six, we reach our fifty percent. So why, why, why not take that over the fifty percent and put it into the, that capital? So in twenty five, twenty six, you know, it just keeps going up to over, you know, if you just go all the way out on line thirty four, I mean, we go all the way to a hundred and twenty five percent. Why not just take everything after twenty five, twenty six? And and not put it, not put it there, basically?
So staff is operating under the assumption that any funds that aren't, aren't directed to go somewhere revert, their their natural landing place is to the unrestricted reserve. And and they're, while the goal set is fifty percent, there there's not been direction regarding a cap. If if there is direction to to be provided, we'd be happy to to show it going somewhere else. But the the default on any funds that are, that that we do not have direction for is to the unrestricted reserve.
Okay, so what 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 President Jorgens was saying, we could direct that money to go and cover that deficit.
Yes, sir. I mean, a fund can't have a deficit, the the payment's going to be made from somewhere.
Right.
Steve, Steve, I was just going to, this is John.
Yeah.
Typically, what you'd see is a policy at a certain point in time, or even even if it wasn't fifty percent.
Yeah.
If there was a requirement in the debt fund or the capital fund for a transfer from the general fund because of the requirements to expend certain amount of money before it's incurred, you would just automatically have a policy that you're going to transfer. For example, on on a number of other fire departments, what they do, they just transfer five million, six million every year, as a matter of fact, over a certain amount, once they reach their their reserve requirement or whatever they feel they need into a capital fund or into the debt fund for future expenditures.
And I think that's what we were saying earlier, is if we, you know, I'm sure if you change the assumption on not borrowing the money for the fire station, you know, your general fund balance is going to that the sum of the general fund balance and the and the capital fund balance are going to, you know, change a lot over time. You're going to end up with, you know, you're going to have to build it up and then you can finally spend it to build the the fire station. But that that's really where it's going to change it. That that's the big variable that's going to change this.
Right, right.
And it's funny, just, you know, the the way often you have to look at forecasts is, you know, every business in the world has has, this isn't a hockey stick, but you know, interesting forecasts like this. And it's funny, if you look back historically, we don't have anything like these kinds of general fund balances, never have, nobody ever does, they just don't exist. So something in this whole thing is wrong, I guess is my point. Because it just, this this never shows up. Somebody wants something else out of this that's going to, you know, show up and eat up that money. So staff, do you feel like you've had some direction? Do you need more direction? You have questions of us about?
I I have, I have another question, though. On, you've probably explained this before, but I'm going to ask it again. On line sixty two, sixty three. So we have the Cessera projected obligation, and then we have the Go Invest projected obligation. And there's, and the Go Invest is is always, you know, about two million dollars higher. Can you just explain that?
Yes, sir. The board is, Cessera assumes a seven percent rate of return. The board is directed using a six and a quarter percent rate of return that the delta between those is what generates the actuarially recommended contributions to pension stabilization trust fund.
Gotcha. I I knew you'd explain that many times before, so.
And and the way to, we we talked about that briefly earlier is that, you know, in two thousand and five, we had a twenty eight million dollar or almost twenty nine million dollar, I think, had, you know, unfunded pension liability with Cessera. And the district took out public, that's the thing we're paying off of our public, our pension bond. We took that out, we paid Cessera and got them even, so they had a, we had a zero net pension liability with Cessera. We had twenty eight million dollars of debt to other people, but but Cessera thought we were even. Since two thousand and five, Cessera now has run up another deficit, so now we're forty million dollars in debt to Cessera again. In addition to, now we've been almost paid off our pension obligation bonds, but they did to us again.
Yeah.
And it keeps happening. They have a long history, back twenty five years of doing the same kind of thing. They always overestimate what they're going to earn and they and they also discount the obligations at too high a discount rate, so they underestimate what the liabilities are and they overestimate what the assets are, and there's this gap. And that's why we're putting the money aside because they they do it over and over and over. So that's why we're having to put the money aside. Otherwise, we're going to end up with a big nasty surprise again at one of these days.
Right, and and and, you know, looking at these projections and and this plan, I think, you know, at least members of the public could certainly look at this and go, we're flush. We got lots of money. Look at, look at that on, you know, unrestricted fund, so you know, and we're not. I know John, Director Jackson's the first one to say, we're not, we're not flush. It's not, it's not such a, so rosy as as it might appear.
Well, it, the, the, coming back to the serious thing issue, what what that does is it under the, by setting these high expectation rates, they underfund currently the required contribution. And so then eventually when, so you're, they, they go up. If they, if they finally, you know, true up their numbers to reality, you're going to, instead of being three million pension contribution, it's going to be six million. What we're saying, we're not going to get into that trap. We're going to basically have it provided for so that when that day comes and the reckoning recurs, we're we're prepared. If not, you know, then you then you're going to have a big surprise.
Right, and and the example of that is the reason that that CalPERS, for example, has not lowered their expectation from the, I think they're slightly, they've come down from seven and a half to seven, I think, for example. And the reason they aren't lowering it is because every time they lower it just a little bit, if they lowered it to where they really thought it was, which was the six and a quarter, every, every municipality in the state would be bankrupt that year. Well, other than the fact they smoothed in the, you know, the negative news, but it would be a huge extra because their premiums would have to go up dramatically to cover the cost they really think they're going to incur. So they keep kicking the can down the road and slowly trying to get there. But in reality, you know, someday, if they ever really step up to what reality is, they're going to there's a huge hole sitting out there that they're, you know, we're filling in luckily preemptively, we're patching our potholes early. Which is good, fiscally responsible.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
One more quick thing for for me, the strike team revenue that we have, we've assumed it's five hundred and ten thousand dollars for next year. But when you look backwards, you know, it was as low as a hundred and sixty something earlier. Hundred and sixty, seven hundred and sixty one. So, you know, and this year it happened to be a crazy, much bigger than it's ever been, it was a million dollars. So picking the average of four years is actually pretty optimistic. And and to assume that it's going to be higher than it's ever been other than this year seems unrealistic to me. Now, again, it's a complete variable. We could have another million dollar year next year, but I don't think we can forecast we're going to have something that's higher than than, you know, it was in nineteen, in in year nineteen twenty or eighteen nineteen, when it was only a hundred and sixty one thousand or three hundred and seventy nine thousand.
Yes, sir, is there, it it, we'd be happy to take direction regarding what assumption to use for that.
Hey, Chief, is it, and and I just note on apparatus costs, industry standard that an engine in the last twenty years?
That depends on the the use case here. We're, we're, we have an update on that more, but we're, we're developing the analysis to suggest when those rigs should be replaced. A challenge for us is our fleet size is so small. And and some of it has to do with the unique name, but it's just not large enough for it to balance out. So you have a a specific rig that has specific problems to that rig, skews the numbers one way or the other. But it's not, it's certainly not common to have them in frontline service for twenty years. It is common to have them in a combination of frontline and reserve service for twenty years.
Okay.
But once again, it depends on on the use, how, where it's driven, how it's driven, how often it makes runs, how long those runs are, et cetera.
All right.
On the strike team revenue, how much of that's under our control?
None, sir. None, sir.
None. So if, if we're called, we, we.
I'm sorry. So that, that's, I mean, it's a simplification. So we have no, I misunderstood the premise. I apologize. So with regard to the frequency of fires, obviously we have no control over that.
Right.
Big fire season, little fire season, uh, at the macro level, we have no control. At the micro level regarding our ability to put up both engines, uh, as part of strike teams. We have very little control over that because to form a strike team, we need four other engines and a leader from throughout the county. So, uh, regardless of our availability and our interest in participating, uh, we, we, we don't control whether or not a strike team is formed. Occasionally they'll form rainbow strike teams, uh, between counties, but the system has to be really drawn down before that occurs. Um, so with that regard, uh, we have some control over our ability, our availability, our ability to put up rigs. Uh, but we don't control the opportunity. Uh, on the other hand, uh, the thing we do control i- is the deployment of single resources. So those are our members, uh, who have worked their way through the CICCs qualification system and have the requisite training and experience and have opened a task book. Uh, through our three hundred committee that allows them to go out to fill single resource roles. Uh, on that regard, we, we have a tremendous amount of control, uh, and we've seen a significant expansion of our participation in those programs. As members have become qualified and have gone out, uh, with, in, in accordance with the, the priorities I previously briefed the board on that. I see this as a tremendous opportunity to build experience and exposure to large fires that will benefit us, uh, when inevitably a fire someday occurs here. Uh, so with that regard, we have, um, we have a significant amount of control because even in a small fire season, there are still fires. And single resources, particularly sought after single resources, deployed at a much higher rate than strike teams and aren't beholden to other resources. We've seen, as I mentioned, we've seen a significant increase in participation on the part of our members. However, it's worth noting that while that results in more outs and, and more deployments, uh, that's deployment of a member or sometimes a member and a trainee, as opposed to when a strike team goes, uh, we have four members on the engine plus the engine, which generates revenue and, and oftentimes a strike team leader. So, um, and out, uh, you know, or sending members to a fire is not always, uh, does not always have the same benefit, uh, from a financial standpoint to the district.
Well, five hundred thousand a year seems normal or reasonable?
It, it's, it's very hard to answer. Uh, yes, sir. I mean, as you see in one of the years shown there, five hundred thousand dollars was, was over, uh, was essentially, you know, three and a half X what deployments looked like. There were three X what deployments were that year. So it, it very much depends on, on the severity of the fire season. That said, fire season is getting worse, not better over time. Uh, but that doesn't help in a, in a year that, um, where there's heavy rains or some other thing that, that causes less fire activity.
Yes, my thought on that would be, you know, this is, I know it's the long range financial forecast, but at the end of the day, we're going to use this through the first year as kind of the basis for the budget, as Gloria said. And, uh, as, as much as it might be a reasonable number for long term, it's not obvious to me that you would want to. I guess I'd rather have a positive surprise than a negative surprise about things like that because if it turned out it was a hundred and sixty-one again next year and instead of four hundred and ninety-five, that'd leave a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar hole in our budget. Uh, and that's a pretty big number for us. So I would personally make that as, you know, to rely on, because at the moment you're kind of relying on it. I would personally make it more like a quarter million or something that's closer to historical number. Maybe three hundred thousand.
Okay.
That was, anybody else have comments? The public have any more comments?
We do have two hands raised.
Okay.
I'm going to unmute Vincent Wells.
Welcome, President Wells.
Hey, good evening, uh, members of the board. Hey, I'm going to throw something out there that maybe nobody was expecting tonight, but, um, um, as you guys know, that, um, we're looking at, um, in, in, uh, with Contra Costa County and East Contra Costa Fire District and Rodeo Hercules is looking at, um, some form of annexation. Where, as we already seen, kind of preliminary, the, the benefits it's going to have on just service delivery, um, training, you know, access, um, and just the benefit it would have to have a more robust, um, fire service, um, group as far as training, just, just the, all the components of what we do as firefighters, so. I would suggest that maybe, um, that not so much along the lines of this conversation, but that perhaps that Maragorinda looks into looking at the value of um, or the benefits of possibly, you know, annexing into, you know, the fire district, um, Confire Fire District and with the goals of um, trying to create one department that minimizes all the, um, you know, the cost, infrastructure cost, uh, training. All the different components that are needed to try to be, um, the one fire department or one fire district. So I would just throw that out there that I, I know from talking to the membership in, in Maragorinda, they would definitely be interested in having some kind of conversation or view or, um, you know, looking into possibly being, um, looking at, um, consolidating or annexing into one bigger fire district. So I guess my question would be to see if you guys would be willing to throw that out there and maybe even look into having some kind of analysis done to see the pros and cons of doing that. We're seeing the value of that. Um, within the, uh, each Contra Costa, just with, you know, consolidating with Confire. We looked at, I mean, the preliminary numbers to show that we can get two additional stations out there where we all, we, we all know that they're short to. So I would just think that, you know, um, MOFD may, maybe it's a good time to look into the possibilities of the benefits of consolidating. Thank you.
So I could just tell you, I was involved in the formation of MOFD back when it happened. It went to a bunch of meetings and things. The, the reason we have MMW, MOFD at the moment is because they didn't, Corinda used to be part of it and they broke off. Um, so, uh, and, and they broke off for a whole lot of good reasons and I, the meetings that I was at at least, uh, if you would have said that, we would have had to call one of your ambulances. So I, I mean, it's interesting thought and I might save money, but I think the people here were willing to pay for a different kind of a different level of service that they knew was going to be customized to them versus generic for the county.
Wasn't there an attempt at one time before Station Forty-three of having a joint station with Confire and that blew apart?
Yeah.
And that's why we ended up building Station Forty-three.
Oh, yes.
Well, yes, it's also, it's been brought up that we, um, are short on money, we are possibly short on funds, that we are going to be tight on, uh, revenues, everything, correct? That's been, that's our long range forecast we're looking at. Would it possibly be a bit more beneficial to be part of a large organization financially?
Yeah, except that large organization just got through giving away six percent a year for the next five year raises. And all of a sudden, our little, our little communities wouldn't have any say in that.
Right. And they're doing just fine financially and we are not, is what you're saying.
They got rid of their ambulances. They, uh, you know, they have, they have a lot, much different.
It would not be better for the, would it not be our due diligence to look into this matter? Would it not be better for us to do this for our, um, the citizens?
Well, I think maybe.
Rather than just say, no, we looked at it a long time ago, back in the nineties, and it didn't, we didn't like it then. And I mean, I don't, we can go off of those, uh, stats.
I, I, I think it, 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 it offers, uh, you know, an intriguing opportunity to, to take a look at it. I think right now we're maybe not the best time right now, but you know, and that it's been thrown out there. Uh, I mean, we're in the process of negotiations, we're in a, a pandemic and, you know, economically, you know, we'll see how things work out, you know, in the next year. You know, I would, I would probably say I wouldn't just discard what Vince just, just brought up. Uh, and I would certainly be interested to, to at least look into the possibility, uh, but I don't think right now is the right time. And I know I've said that before on other matters and I don't just, you know, want to kick it down the line and, and I, I think it's worth, worth, um, taking a further look, uh, you know, but, um.
Maybe we should take it to the, to the, um, the folks a- a- at the city councils for Aranda and Maraga, ha- having recently spoken to several city council members about topics like that, that particular topic, actually.
Yeah.
Um, I, I can tell you that I'm pretty sure the city of Aranda would withdraw from all of that and do its own thing.
Well, uh, you know, maybe at, at some point, maybe we, we, we bring it up and see. I, I, you know, right now.
I think, I think we owe it to everyone to go through that process though, of at least looking at the numbers and showing the city and the town that could it possibly be more financially, uh, fiscally responsible to be part of a larger agency? Could we have more access to resources being part of a larger agency? Would be more beneficial to be part of a larger agency? These are all questions that we need to ask and answer prior to telling people what they are going to get.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, uh, you know, East County and, uh, and Hercules, uh, it, it, uh, area is going through right now, the, the study and you know, probably worth it to watch what's going on there and, and see how that shakes out. Uh, and maybe go from there, uh, it just, it just doesn't seem at the right. I, I, I think it would be worth, I, I agree with you, uh, Director Bates. I think it's worth taking a look at. That's all. Maybe at some point.
I would encourage us to, as we're doing that, or maybe before we spend all the time enough for doing that, to go back and read the documents, uh, and, and the, the newspaper articles as we were forming MOFD in the first place.
Okay, we can do that.
The ones from the, uh, the nineties, is that correct?
And, and there've been, been articles since then, but yes.
I, I think those two, Hercules, my recollection in East County, when we were looking at their financial information, they were basically bankrupt. They may have not had even an issue. And because they couldn't, the, the taxpayers out there refused over and over again to do a bond. And as a result of it, the district couldn't build, they had to cut services. Couldn't, or I think, I think that's a, a merger of urgency rather than choice.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I, yes, I think that's a situation there, but like Director Bates said, I mean, I don't, I personally have no idea. Would we, would we in fact get better service? Who knows? We don't know.
Well, but, 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 but the key is what you lose is control. I think the whole question circles around not money because money's interesting and, and I'm, I, I, I'll.
Yeah.
I'm sure that we can show that you would save money. It's obvious you can show you could save money. That's fine. The problem is what you lose is control. And what happened before was we, there was a risk that they were, and, and again, back in the nineties, you can, history is a wonderful thing. What happened was people said, oh, well, let's close some fire stations. So when people decide, when the county now decides that they want to close fire stations, which they have, which other municipalities have done. Then the county gets to decide where they're going to close their fire stations. And if they decided to close some of those in Aranda or in Maraga, we'd have a lot to worry about, but no say so. That's what the whole crux of the entire argument came down to last time.
Well, yes, but.
Yeah, just look into other agencies that have used those exact words. Local control. We gotta have local control. We need to be in control. Look at other agencies that have said those exact words and how much trouble they are in right now.
Give me an example, so I can look into it.
East County.
Well, yeah, that's right. The local people there voted not to do it and, and it turned out the entire county is now bailing them out, is what you're telling me.
No, not at all.
Well, that's exactly what John just said. The local people, I was, I was, the votes were on the, on the, on your ballot, you know, and you could see what was on in the newspaper. They voted down spending money on their fire districts time and time again, and now they're bankrupt.
Uh, members, uh, I, 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 I hate to get in the middle of a good brawl, but, um, the, um, I just want to remind you and I've, I've let this go because, because you're in a workshop. But the item is not agendized as, uh, you know, uh, um, joining another district or, you know, whatever, dissolving the district. And so I, I think it's, you know, I, I've let it go because I think it, it's certainly something that relates to the, the budget and the ten-year plan in certain respects, because obviously your existence does. But I, I, I'm, I'm getting concerned that we're getting pretty far afield here for what agenda.
So if somebody wants to put that on a future agenda, we can do that.
Okay.
You said, Marsha, you said there was a second person?
Yes, we now have three more hands raised. I am now unmuting Jonathan Goodwin.
Well, good evening again. Um, that was, uh, Captain Wells was right. That really did come out of left field as far as I was concerned. That really livened up the, uh, proceedings here. Um, I have a thought on that, but I first want to, um, make the comments I was going to make before that came up. Um, the first is going back to, if you remember the conversation about facilities, uh, about half an hour ago. Um, going back to facilities. Um, I'm wondering if it's possible to quantify the effect upon the district of having substandard facilities. And I say this with very little hope. Um, I mean, it, I, I don't, I, I, there's certainly nothing I can recommend. And I certainly do remember, there was a fellow, uh, earlier on in this, uh, workshop period who, um, talked about, uh, Station Forty-three being, uh, you know, having the rotten roof. What he didn't mention was that also below the roof and the joists of the attic, uh, for insulation was rotten, uh, redwood, um, uh, what do you call them? Chips, you know, from sawmills for insulation instead of, you know, like fiberglass, because it was built so long ago. It was quite the fire trap. So I mean, that's, that's one tangible effect of having substandard facilities. And I'm wondering if it's possible to quantify for people like me who live here and they're hoping to have, you know, up to standard response and so on, uh, that, that aspect of the equation. Uh, that's point number one. Point number two, I just want to say, I really did appreciate your conversation about Cessara. They are a culprit. They really, uh, as, as Director Jurgens said, time and time again, uh, give out these predictions in bad faith and then cover out with this huge bill, which is exactly the reason you're, you're retiring that debt uh, on that, those bonds, which, you know, effectively haven't exactly delivered the, uh, district from their debt to Cessara. So, um, I, I just, I just wanted to give you guys a nod of appreciation for that. Lastly, in response to, uh, Captain Wells. Ay, 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 you know, this, this really raises concerns. I'm afraid there's going to be blood in the water here between you guys before too long because, uh, sooner or later, the next election's going to come along. It's going to come out, of course, that have, more than, you know, the majority of the board was bought and paid for by the firefighters unions, who are the ones who really stand to gain the most from consolidation. And now, why do I say that? I say that because they were the ones who campaigned for it the hardest in nineteen ninety-seven, picketing outside of Station Forty-One, to give one example. Um, I'm afraid that, I'm concerned that, um, it could turn into a kind of a campaign wedge issue and the campaigns for you guys have been kind of interesting. I'll just call. interesting, I'll just call it that. I'm just concerned that it, it could get out of control or to, I mean, I, I kind of felt like, like Director Danziger was trying to kind of, you know, keep things at a cooler temperature, but, I mean, pre, preemptively, but I think you guys really need to think that aspect through, of how to keep that discussion at a low temperature where it belongs. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
I'd just like to say, I don't think, I'll speak for myself, I wasn't bought and paid for by anybody. And, you know, I think that any decisions, anything that I do here as a director, I'm always looking at the best interest of the district. That's all I'll say on that.
I am unmuting Melanie Light.
Hi, Melanie.
She needs to, there we go.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Very interesting discussion. I just wanted to comment about Vince Wells' suggestion that we are consolidate, we entertain the thought of being consolidated. I think that the people of Arinda, the citizens right now are really mobilized and excited to create a model town that is wildfire sustainable. And I think that we have everything going for us right now with a fantastic relationship with the, the MOFD. We have the city on board, we have citizens mobilized. I am quite certain that should we become consolidated into Confire, that momentum would be severely curtailed. As far as I can tell, Confire is not, at this point, very interested or very proactive with fire-wise communities or fire prevention. I know that we've been in discussion with the mayor of Lafayette and they're frustrated by that. There, they would like to move forward and, and it's been slower than they would like. I think that if this were put forward to the people of Arinda, they wouldn't like it. I don't think this would, would go over well. I think that we really need to, to stick with our knitting. I think we need to keep moving forward with mitigating the fuel in this town, with educating people, getting ourselves to a certain place there. I also think that some of the financial troubles that MOFD has, it's largely related to the pension fund, is that right? I believe. And that, those obligations, I believe, would not go away if we were consolidated into Confire, is that right? And I'll, that's, I'll let you answer that for me, thank you very much.
Thanks, Melanie.
So Vince Wells has re-raised his hand.
As Jonathan mentioned, I think we're probably not supposed to talk about this topic a lot more on the board. So if you have a different topic, that'd be great.
Oh, no, I, there was a lot of conversation back and forth. So the only point that I was making was, or wanted to make or reiterate is just perhaps looking into the, I'm not speaking that there is an answer, or this is the answer, or it's just more along the lines of looking into it and seeing if there's any value to doing it. That's, that was my, that's my two cents on it, was just to look into whether there was any value into it. And, you know, the community and everybody can, you know, make their decisions based on what comes back to whether or not there's any value to it or not. And like I said, it might not be be appropriate for this conversation, but it's just something I would like to ask, you know, to be put on the agenda to just look at the value of it and whether there is or not. It's not a, I didn't mean to offend anybody. Anyway, thank you.
Marcia, are there any more?
Yes, Jonathan Goodwin has re-raised his hand.
Let's keep it short, Jonathan, okay?
I, I didn't realize I had done that, but I did want to apologize to Director Danziger. I didn't mean any offense. I, I, I was referring to the fact that three of the directors were, it's according to the camp, you know, the campaign things, information filed with the state. Now, it shows that they were supported to the tune of over $10,000 each and they had the exact same accountant. Then I, my, my, my thought was that it just, that fact and, you know, whatever else could just make it into a difficult conversation. And I, I was just urging the board to be cautious, thank you.
Okay, Marcia, anymore?
Yes, we have one more, I'm unmuting Jacob Ariola.
Hi, Jacob.
Good evening, President Jorgensen, board. I was referring to number 11, the strike team revenue. I wanted just to add a comment to what the chief was saying, that the state is invested more in local government and we're doing strike teams in the county preemptively, just according to weather conditions. So we maybe could receive revenue without actual fires occurring. Additionally, I strongly discourage the board from arbitrarily lowering numbers just for the sake of being conservative. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes our hands raised and we have not received any written public comment.
So I guess the only thing that I heard that was controversial out of all of this discussion was about striking. And, and we need to give some guidance to Gloria, or that, or we need to have scenarios, take your pick. But either we need to give her some guidance about what to put in there for a striking number, or we need to have a scenario. Which way do people feel about that?
I don't know, using historical data for the strike team, I'm okay the way it is.
Leave it the way it's written.
Do we have a, I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, from a, from a forecasting standpoint, using, you know, if you've got three data points, which is all I see on the page. Statistically, you wouldn't just do the average of numbers that are, that vary by a factor of seven or six. That would be unusual.
Well, it's the same, it's the same, this is the same model we've used before, right? This isn't different.
Well, I don't know, do we use 500,000 a year before, Gloria?
I'll have to look at what I used last year.
I think it was a lot less. Because I think we adjusted it upward.
Last year, net, the net, strike team revenue, net of overtime projection was $85,000.
So we're multiplying it by five, six. It was really, I would argue that's really low, but that's a pretty big change.
That was the budget or expected?
Is that what we use for our, on the long-range plan?
$85,000 was used in last year's long-range financial forecast.
Okay.
That's a.
I'm comfortable with 300,000.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't realize that was such a big change.
I, again, I would agree with John, something more like 300,000 would seem like a more reasonable number as a forecast for something that varies as much as that.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Director Bates?
I said my piece, I'd like to keep it where it's at.
Okay. So it looks like we have three that are 301, that's 500, so Gloria, and I'll let you read what you want to out of that. Okay, any more comments on our long-range financial forecast? If not, I guess.
A lot of work.
It was a lot of work, thank you very much, Gloria, for not only doing a good presentation, but also put a lot of good work into it. And I know especially the Cisera numbers are very challenging to understand when all this stuff gets put together. So that's great, thank you. So with that, we can move on to, I'm not seeing my own presentation pop up here. So I guess we will close the comment, the public comment period, because we, it's kind of all been mixed into all this, and go on to committee reports.
Well, we, on, on 10.4, the ad hoc committee, we, we've, I'm trying to remember now, we met since the la, since our last.
No, I think, I thought they canceled it.
Oh, they did, you're right, you're right.
They canceled it, yep.
Okay, so we don't have, I don't think we have a date for the next one either.
I agree, I think not.
Okay, you're right, that's right.
Any other committee meetings that happened? If not, we'll move on to.
No.
Oh, sorry, I got, look at, turn of years. So do we have any public comment on agenda items? I guess that's what those were, did we have any public comment on the, I guess we couldn't have, on 10.1 through 10.4?
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Okay, so I'll post all the comment on that. And then do we have any brief information-only reports, buddy, anybody attending something at district expense?
No.
Okay, on to 11.2. Any informal questions or comments? 11.3, Fire Chief Updates, this one, I'm pretty sure we're going to have a response from the chief.
Good evening, directors. With regard to COVID-19, we continue to see the rollout of vaccination, which firefighters throughout the county and the county fire department apparatus have been supporting. We, we do not have an end date on those, although we do foresee that transitioning to county health-run facilities and the continued provision of vaccines to the, the mega site that FEMA is running at the Oakland Coliseum. And we do currently have one member deployed in support of COVID mitigation to the State Operations Center in Sacramento. So, so while we do not have that same, the large engagement that we had with the previous months where we had members working in hospitals, we do continue to see a steady drip. One of the things that is worth noting, though, is that as this whole government approach has continued, specifically with CAL FIRE, CAL OES, lots of resources that would normally, in the off-season, be working fuel mitigation and fire prevention activities have been redirected to, to COVID support. So we, we do anticipate seeing some output at the state level, output reductions at the state level as, as some of the planning and execution of those, of those projects is not happening, because those folks are supporting the, the vaccine rollout. As everyone remembers from last month, Christine Russell unfortunately left us and took another position in what was a, a career advancement for her. So while we wish her luck in her future endeavors, she is no longer here. And Gloria, in her role as the Administrative Services Director, has been covering down on human resources and will provide that report.
Currently, we have a vacancy in the Human Resources Manager position. We held an open recruitment, which closed on March 3rd. We received 31 applications for the position. I'll hold interviews of six candidates. Next is the captain's promotional process, which opened on March 1st. Applications are due May 30 and the examination will occur on June 4. We have one engineer who is retiring at the end of this month. Please join me in congratulating Janet Brandy on her successful career.
All right.
And establish eligibility. All right, we have an established eligibility list for engineer and the next candidate will be promoted at the end of the month. Finally, we have one vacancy for fuels mitigation specialist. We have one candidate who is moving through the process and is expected to start in the beginning of April. This concludes my report.
And for those who, who may have missed it, Nick Marnell did a very nice piece covering Janet's trailblazing career. And we wish her not only congratulations on the successful completion of her career and thanks for the compassionate care she provided to the residents of the district over many years, but also great success in her next endeavor.
Yes.
Right, next, Mary Smith will be giving us a finance update.
Good evening, directors. I'm going to start off with a strike team update. Next slide, please. So, strike team reimbursement, the, the OES strike team receivable total is about 2.5 million. We've received payments of about $800,000 to date, so our net receivable outstanding is about 1.7 million. The last, most recent payment came in on March 9th. We have received payment for eight invoices, we have 19 invoices still outstanding. And I know that the chief has touched on this before, but I just wanted to go over the reimbursement process overview again, just so you can get an idea of the timeline. So F42s and paperwork are sent to OES when the firefighter returns from their assignment. OES then creates an invoice and sends it to MOFD for review and approval, and that process takes a couple of months. MOFD then signs the invoice and returns it to OES. And then OES processes payment and mails the check to MOFD, and all this is done via paper. So next slide, please. So the timing of the payments that come in, there's no correlation between when we receive the payments and when the incident actually happened. We have the longest outstanding incident without payment occurred nine months ago. We've received an invoice but no payment, and the shortest time between the incident and payment to date has been five months. So if we look at the Quail Fire Incident, it happened in June. OES has sent the invoice in December and the payment still has not been received. Whereas the August Complex Fire happened in August, we received an invoice in November and a check in February. So there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason as to how the, the, when the invoices get paid or when the incident occurred. Next slide, please. As the chief mentioned, we did have personnel staffing COVID vaccine clinics in February, 108 hours. And the payroll for staffing those clinics is going to be reimbursed by FEMA. So we're submitting reimbursement February payroll in the amount of $7,000. There is no timeline on the reimbursement from FEMA. There's, they're putting a process in place for that, but we don't know what the timeline will look like for the actual payment. We did in, in March, on March 3rd, make the pars transfer that was approved at the last board meeting of 1.894, 425. And I am working on an analysis, an apparatus analysis of the MOFD fleet. We're looking at the historic repair and maintenance costs. And we are identifying annual maintenance costs versus repair costs and accident repairs. And the objective here is to provide information and analysis that we, analysis that we can use in evaluating apparatus replacement decisions and timelines. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Mary, this is John Jackson. A question with regards to the previous slide, invoices in terms of the strike team reimbursement. Do they acknowledge, I mean, just question one particularly that lasts that long, that has not been paid. What kind of follow-up processes is there from the district to them or communication in terms of why the payments were being held up? What kind of follow-up processes is there from the district to them or communication in terms of why the payments were being held up?
Mary, would you mind if I stepped in there? Director Jex, I've worked in the State Operations Center where these are processed and and so staff regularly follows up and inquiries to determine where they're at. The, as Mary mentioned, these are paper, it's literal paper that is processed and then is manually input, is manually analyzed, is then input again. And when you step into the space where these are processed, there are piles of F42s, very tall piles and lots of banker's boxes. And they've been severely impacted by COVID, which is reduced because people are working remotely, anything that involves processing that much paper does not lend itself to remote working. So they've seen an interruption of their workflow there. And then also this was a historic fire season. So there, they saw a volume of, of claims on a system that I think anything that is that paper-based involves that many back and forth in this day and age can be described as less than ideal. So while we engage and follow up with them, they get to the pile that they get to and they get to it. And there's just we asking the question or querying, having, having met with the people who process it and having queried them about their process. It is a process that just moves at the pace that it moves. And I'm confident that while we engage and we ask on a regular basis, the processing of it is not something that we can accelerate by more frequent queries.
I appreciate that. And I recognize when you think in terms of the magnitude of the fires and the number of agencies involved. Yeah, it's made of the, they can find this stuff. So it's a, yeah. Unusual because of the volume.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Do we have, thank you. Do we have any?
Thanks, Mary.
I'm sorry?
I just say thank you, Mary.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, directors. Since, for February, we have 45 complaints, 28 did tree complaint, 17 complaints about exterior hazard baitment. We haven't started the exterior hazard baitment inspections for 2021 yet, but you see we've had 121 property transfer inspections since January 1st. Our plan review, we had 55 in January, 20 in February, a little drop off there, but we've already seen over 20 plans submitted for the first two weeks of March. We did one school occupancy or e-occupancy inspection, still trying to schedule our two occupancies mandated inspections with the property management companies of the apartment complexes. Our district funded chipping prior to the, the loss of our staff members, moving on to bigger and better things. We were able to complete since January, first 15 days of district funded chipping, removing approximately 43 tons of material. Our grant funded chipping that was the partnership with Diablo Firesafe Council, we removed 242 piles and that equals 60.3 tons of material that was removed. Excellent, please, Marsha. Current projects working to close out the $90,000 grant funded work that we did with, again, in partnership with Firesafe Council. CAL FIRE fire prevention grants have opened up. We're working on writing several grants for new fuel break. Additional chipper work to support the district funded chipper. Also, our new hire orientation that we will begin once our new fuels mitigation specialist gets on board. Plans for this quarter, really focus on fuels mitigation training with the new staff that we have. Get our district funded chipper, chipper up and running again, and then prepare for the exterior hazard abatement inspections. We also are working on our fire adaptive community ambassador. And to get that program up and running and help us with our education outreach in the firewise communities and to report.
Could you just spend a second explaining what the, I'm not sure that everybody's heard what the, the, the training the junior fire chief or fire inspector folks are.
If I could, if I could correct that, sir, I want to be very careful about these inspectors and the fire adaptive community ambassador program.
There we go.
It is designed to harness the interest that members of the community have in sharing the good word about how their neighbors. So with the geographic orientation localized to where they live, how their neighbors can do work, they'll reduce the threat of uncontrolled wildfire. So not an, not an inspection, not assessment, using standardized material, delivering an explanation of what some of the elements of the fire code, what, what it means. I think when we say ladder fuel, there's still members of the community that, to whom that doesn't mean something. And so giving interested members of the community, some information, some education that will help them better explain the components of the fire code and do it from that position as a trusted neighbor. So in local to that community knows that community's, the sort of the general feel and the flavor of it and is able to communicate as a neighbor will directly benefit from the fire safety increases in the aggregate as a neighborhood comes online and more parcels become compliant. We also see it as a great way to help thicken the line, if you will, and allow our fuels mitigation and fire prevention resources, the focus on enforcement. And every time that someone else is doing education, that frees our resources up to run the chipper, to do enforcement, to do the follow-up and all of the things that it takes to bring a parcel into compliance when we don't have a voluntary cooperative resident or owner. Now, we're very excited about it. We're starting it as a, as a pilot program at a relatively small scale to figure out what works and what doesn't. Obviously, anytime we put information in people's hands and ask them to share it with others, there's the chance of something being lost in translation. So, so we're taking a very deliberate approach to this, moving forward one small step at a time. And one other thing, just having to do with prevention that Jeff mentioned in passing. Using in partnership with CAL FIRE and funding from CAL FIRE and East Bay Mode is the landowner. We completed a significant amount of contracted work along the north shoulder of Pinehurst from Canyon towards driveway 24. Very excited about that and I think that offers an example of additional work when, when subsequent funding becomes available to start reducing the risk in that area from a roadside start along Pinehurst.
Great.
I have a question. I noted that yesterday, yeah, yesterday, the Arinda City Council approved the purchase of a chipper in a truck. And I wonder if there is any discussion going on with and there were some, there was some comments about MOFD being involved and I don't, I'm not sure if that was for their Measure R funds. I'm really not sure about that, but I did know they approved the, a chipper in a truck. Is, is that, are we going to be involved in that?
We've been helping them with the process of determining how to institute the, the Measure R funding for fire prevention and fire fuels reduction in a manner that that complements the, the work we've been done and avoids them having to spend a significant amount of time studying the problem, allowing them to build upon the expertise we've developed over the last several years.
Yeah, they did mention that MOFD was even helping assisting with the purchase of the equipment.
We reviewed the specification, provide comments.
Got it. Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing what becomes of that. And Marshall, Fire Marshal Isaacs was talking about, you know, complaints received to think up to date right now. I note even in my area where I live, numerous Monterey pines right now, this time of year, that the top canopy of these trees, maybe only the top 25% or less is totally brown. So, you know, just from your experience, is, is that an indication that these trees are going to be dead by the time the summer comes? I mean, is this?
Yes, with, with absolute certainty, those trees will be dead in the next weeks, if not, months, if not weeks. Those trees don't, don't recover when you know, the turpentine beetle or just age and drought stress kicks in and they die very quickly.
Hmm hmm. Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. So any other comments, public comments, Marsha, anything?
I just have a close out if I may, sir.
Oh, sorry.
So in addition to the work that we've been doing with the grant funded chipping and fuel reduction, taking advantage of the favorable weather, we'll be putting fire on the ground on Friday and Saturday, both in piles that have been built, driving towards our goal of reaching the thousand pile challenges as shown in our fuel reduction dashboard. And some attempts to use the Terra Torch and standing coyote brush. That's experimental. We're not, we're not sure exactly what the, what the mix is and so forth. We have a couple of very safe, isolated parcels with control lines cut already around them. Where we are very interested in the opportunity to burn standing coyote brush in a safe manner in these winter months when everything around them is wet and green as a way to increase the efficiency of mitigating that particular standing fuel. We continue to work with Caltrans on their requirements to maintain the state owned lands along Highway 24. We've had three public, or three local government, state government workshops with them. We have another one scheduled for next week, all driving towards their requirement, internal requirement to produce a site-specific fire risk plan by April 1st of each year, which, which they have not produced in the previous five years that we requested via PRA last summer. So we continue to work with them. We hope to be able to report resolution on that in the near future. As, as mentioned in the attached correspondence received, we responded to a fully involved structure fire on Timontel last month, made particularly challenging by the fact that the, there's a power line down, a live power line down in the driveway. And the, the gas service burned through causing an uncontrolled natural gas flare on the delta side of the house. Really as a result of the power line down and the gas flaring, that made it very difficult to approach that side of the house. And as a result of that, that end of the house, we were unable to get water on it. The fire was well established in the attic upon arrival. While the fire was put out, there was significant damage to the house and those conditions really contributed to that. It's very challenging when, when one portion of the structure is off limits, in this case because of the safety concerns of the live power line and the flaring natural gas service. And then lastly, would like to call out and recognize Senator Glazer's office. Senator Glazer is advancing SB 804, which is a Bay Area Forestry Training Center. This, we're very excited about this. One of the great challenges we have with advancing our fuel reduction work is the possibility of hand crews that are needed to perform work while minimizing environmental disruption and soil disturbance. This proposal would create a forest ward training center in the area for formerly incarcerated, incarcerated individuals, specifically those with California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation Hand Crew Fire Line Service. So, so folks who are already trained and qualified, which there are quite a few of because the drawdown and early release associated with COVID, that means that of the hundred and something hand crews that were available in previous years from CDCR, this year there's approximately 37 available. So at the same time, we see this huge drawdown in available resources that we're trying to ramp up and increase the amount of work we're doing. There aren't as many people available to do it specifically from Delta Camp for our case. If this legislation advances and and the, the training center is built in this area, we're excited, one, about the, the opportunity this will provide for people with, with experience of the transition into a career in wildland firefighting or in fuels reduction, as well as access to the hand crews that, that for, that forestry training center will be fielding. So we applaud Senator Glazer for his efforts on that and have been working with his office to help develop it and hopefully see it advance.
And chief, can you give me the number one more time? SB what?
SB 804.
804. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? I, I just want to compliment the chief and, and the Fire Marshal Isaacs and his, and all their team and the spending of the, what was it, $90,000 in like six weeks or maybe weeks. You know, getting, getting the community up and running and, you know, I know the various firewise communities around helped a lot in, in getting stuff on the curb. But you guys did a great job of taking advantage of, you know, free money to be able to, you know, help our communities. So thank you.
It was four weeks.
Four weeks, okay.
But who's counting?
Right. Okay, so you already talked about, so any future agenda items? Okay. Any public comment on the items we discovered 11.1 through 11.5?
We have one hand raised. I'm unmuting Jonathan Goodwin.
I'm now unmuted. Good evening again. Please take notes, Chief Wintaker. I noticed that my question about quantifying the possibility, is there a possibility really of quantifying the effect of substandard fire stations on quantifying the effect of that on response in the community? Curious about that. I, it must have some effect, but I'm not sure it's able, one is able to really express that. But I'm sure that a creative fellow, if anybody could, a creative fellow like you could do that. I also want to join with Director Jorgens in commending Chief Isaacs, Chief Wintaker, the other people on the team who've been doing the work they've been doing. I mean, it's, it's not only exemplary, it's extraordinary given the context. And I just want to say that I appreciate that from the bottom up and from the top down. The idea of having a, a community ambassador, I think is my, you know, possibly a very cool thing. I just want to mention that too. Give a little nod there. So, so the first, first question I asked, the second one is about the fire prevention specialists. Are, is the district up to full strength in that? I was given to understand not that all three were gone and you're talking about one replaced. I'm just asking for clarification on that. Clarification of when the poor old chipper might be brought back into use because there's, there continue to be piles of brush on Pinehurst Road that we're not able to be gotten rid of by one way or another. Not that they're posing a threat at this time, but I just, you know, since I'm here, I thought I'd ask what the timeframe is for the removal of those. Thank you.
So if we go from the bottom first, Jeff, would you like to, to address the, or able to address piles on Pinehurst?
Yes, sir. Jonathan, the piles will get addressed next week. We have a crew already slated to go out there and remove those.
With regard to the next question, having to do with the fuels mitigation specialist. So we rate three. We were fully staffed at three entering the new year. Two left, one to take a position with the San Francisco City Fire Department. We're very excited for that opportunity for another to pursue education, further his goal of becoming a firefighter. And the third is off on paternity leave for some period of times. We filled the two vacancies. We filled one of those from the existing list. She's currently working and, and trained up and ready to go. And we are moving through the, the background process with, with our, our second hire or our second hire, which will bring us back to full strength of three, noting that one is going to be missing for some period of time due to the paternity leave.
Okay, Marsha, any more comments?
We do not have any more hands raised or, and have not received written public comment.
Okay, so we'll close the public commentary for that. And then I'm looking for a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, Marsha.
Director Bates?
Hi.
Director Danzig?
Hi.
Director Jex? President Jorgens?
Hi. Okay, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Okay.
Good night.